Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida. I call this meeting to order. And with that, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Here.
Counselmember Willis, sorry.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
And Counselmember Davis.
Here.
Thank you, Council, for all being here, and our community and public and city staff. We are on item number four of the agenda to approve the agenda as written, or would we like to make any amendments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselmember Willis?
I'd like to add a discussion item, if we may.
Okay.
Let's discuss Cape View Elementary and any position we might want to take as a council.
Thank you. Counsel, before we, are there any other amendments that we would like to consider other than adding Cape View Elementary as a discussion item?
Just one moment, please. Trying to get to that.
All right, any changes to the order? Did you have one, Counselmember Jackson?
Well, I had questions on a couple of the consent agenda items.
Okay, we'll get to that, I think, on the next one, or in a few after presentations. I think, but as far as the order, adding items, striking items.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the add-on discussion item of Cape View.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to approve the agenda with the amendment to add on Cape View Elementary as a discussion item, seconded by Counselmember Willis. Is there any further discussion? I have one discussion to clarify. We have tonight, one item for discussion numbered as 10, is the council's desire to consider this the 11th item following the...
If we were going to have any members of the public here, I would prefer that we discuss that ahead of that item, if possible.
Okay. I think we do. We've got quite a few folks here, I think, for Cape View Elementary. We do have some proclamations and presentations, which should go pretty quickly, and then we'll hear public participation before moving into the managers' matters.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would imagine a lot of the public might want to go ahead and just speak in public participation, but for us to discuss it, we could do it either before item 10 or after?
Got it. So, yeah, I was wondering if we even did it earlier in the agenda, but I think that's, I think we're clear. There's not anything, well, let's clarify, let's... 10, do we want to do it 10 and move the item for discussion on to 11, or 10.1, 10.2?
Well, and the other option, since we have these two public hearings, if you want, I can move it to a special meeting or to a workshop to discuss that item that I have.
Okay, so I think whether we do that or not, you're okay, and this council's okay with moving it at the first discussion item. No issues? Okay, that's all I had for clarity. Any other discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselmember Davis.
Here.
Counselmember Jackson.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
And Counselmember Willis.
Four.
And Counselmember Davis, you're four.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I said.
You said, "Your call, so..."
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I'm four.
Here and four, we're all with you on that. Thank you. Okay, so the agenda is now set, and we are moving on to the presentations and interviews. The first one, Agenda Item 5.1, is Florida City Week proclamation. I have a proclamation up here, and I believe we have someone here to receive the Florida City Week proclamation. Mr. Touchbear, I believe we'll present it to you, and with that, I'll go ahead and head down front and present that. Thank you. This is an official proclamation of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas it is important for residents to understand how their city operates and govern services it provides, which enhance their quality of lives by making their city their home, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens, is dependent upon public commitment to and an understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas the Florida League of Cities recognizes Florida City Week, helping member cities to join together to teach citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities, and offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government, and whereas the City of Cape Canaveral encourages all citizens, city government officials and employees, and other organizations to participate in events that recognize and celebrate Florida City Week. Now therefore I, Wes Morrison, Mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral, by virtue of the authority of said office, hereby proclaim October 20th to the 26th, 2025, as Florida City Government Week, and encourage all residents to celebrate our city by engaging and partaking in its events throughout the week, and take pride in what makes our city so great. Thank you. Mr. Touchbear? Thank you for all you do.
Absolutely.
Want to take a picture? Okay, I have another proclamation here. Florida Water Professionals Month. Wow, thank y'all for being here, for all you do. Thank you. Yes, if y'all want to come over here and we'll take a photo, I'll read it. These are city employees who are water professionals and ultimately serve the residents of the community, so thank you. This is an official proclamation of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, whereas in 1966, the City of Cape Canaveral took over the operations of the former pollution control facility from Beavard County, underwent its first expansion in 1985, which was reclassified as a wastewater treatment facility, and in 1996, with the completion of the second major upgrade, was designated as an advanced wastewater treatment plant. And whereas the Public Works Services Department has combined its infrastructure maintenance, collections, and reclaim field systems and water reclamation facility, WRF operations, which are permitted to operate at an annual average daily flow of 1.8 million gallons per day, and utilizes a five-stage modified Bardenfo biological nutrient removal system. And whereas the department's operations with the provision of utility, storm, and wastewater, laboratory, reclaimed water, the city's infrastructure and facilities, and street maintenance services are all managed to serve the general public, and whereas dedicated public works and utility employees work around the clock, 365 days a year, to ensure that clean drinking water is delivered to every household, wastewater is collected and treated, streets are cleaned, and official, excuse me, and crucial natural water resources, wetlands, and environments are protected and preserved for future generations, and whereas these professionals, utility workers, play an essential role in maintaining and operating critical infrastructure to restore service and prevent future damage, and whereas the month of August was dedicated to honor the City of Cape Canaveral's public works, services, staff efforts, in protecting public health and the environment, with the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association playing a crucial role in its observance by promoting the professional status of these operators and providing resources for training and networking. Now therefore I, Wes Morrison, Mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, by virtue of the authority of said office, hereby recognize and celebrate our Florida water professionals in the City of Cape Canaveral, and encourage citizens to give the city's utility workers the deserved recognition and respect by honoring this vital workforce with significant role they play to operate and maintain drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater systems in the community, and thank the men and women who work tirelessly to protect Florida's precious water systems. Signed and sealed this 21st day of October, 2025. Thank you. The Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Michael Hartman, you here? Hello, Mr. Hartman. If you want to come forward, our city attorney will ask a couple of questions, and Council will have the opportunity. Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Hartman.
Good evening.
All, just a couple of formality questions. All the information in your applications, correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Please explain to the council why you would like to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board, and specifically address your prior experience with zoning and serving on governing boards.
Certainly. I've been on four boards in the county. I was the chairman of the County Housing Authority for five years, from 2009 to 2014. I was chairman of the County Budget Committee in 2015. I am the vice chair of the County Housing Finance Authority since 2015. In 2019, my wife and I moved into Porta del Rio condo there that we bought, but we've got roots that go back in Cape Canaveral to 1989. My in-laws bought a house at 116 Jefferson Avenue in July of 89. We started visiting Cape Canaveral from up north in August of 89, and kept coming back, and we loved it. I was a CPA at the time. In 1993, I came down to do some work for a client, and the client hired me to be their chief operating officer of their development, construction, and property management companies. So, since 1993, I have been doing property development and property construction. I've probably dealt with most of the planning zoning codes and just about every section of the state, all the way from Pensacola down to Key West and numerous points in between. I've done about 100 developments in my life. So, I'm retired now, and I want to just bring my expertise to try to help the city. I'm not necessarily pro-development. I loved Cape Canaveral since we came here in 89. I, you know, I don't mind the growth, but I love the small-town feel of it. I grew up in Baltimore in a 14-foot-wide rowhouse. We had 90,000 people per square mile in Baltimore at that time, so I love the fact that we're small, I love the fact that we're spread out, and I just want to try and serve the city as best I can and the people that live here.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Council, no particular order. This is an interview. Any questions, or Counselmember Davis?
I was going to say, thank you for being, for the city. I think you'll be an asset.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Hartman, good luck.
Thank you, Council.
I know, we've had a relationship in PDR Neighbors for a number of years now, and appreciate everything you were doing while you were on our Board of Directors, and wish you could have brought down our dues a little bit, but that's okay. Thank you.
We're working on the 2026 budget as we speak. We're just in the second iteration, so...
Yeah, well, that's enough of that.
Counselmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman, for applying and for being willing to serve our city. I did have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Especially since you said you're not necessarily pro-development, but you've been in development all the way from Pensacola to Keys.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're 90% built out.
Mm-hmm.
What is your vision for the remaining portion of our island as far as development is concerned?
Well, for one thing, before I retired, I looked at redeveloping one of the trailer parks that are currently in the city, and looked at it, unfortunately, with the way construction costs went up in 2019 through 2022, I couldn't make the numbers make sense. But I think we need to try to get some housing that's more affordable for people. I mean, it's very hard. You look at Porta del Rio, a two, you know, a three-bedroom goes for anywhere from $2,500 a month to $3,500 a month, and there's not a lot of people that can afford that. And we've got a lot of people in the hotels, in the, you know, we're in the people business, we're in the tourism business, and we need to figure out how to provide some good, clean, safe, but affordable housing for those people, so...
Okay. And I'm not through. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Okay. So, having been on an adjustment board, how important is it for you as far as following current code?
I think it's very important because it's been set by the city council. When I was on the Board of Adjustments for the county, the variances they gave, we gave, were usually because something had been grandfathered in, or something like that. So, that's where we gave the variances, for the most part.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hartman. I appreciate your responses.
You're welcome.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Yes, hi, Mr. Hartman.
Hello.
Thank you for applying and being part of the very important Planning and Zoning Board. You have a lot of experience, and there's a lot of people in our community that have experiences such as yourself, and we're glad that you have stepped up to join our planning and zoning, and we welcome.
Thank you very much.
Just want to say thank you, Mr. Hartman. I'm thrilled that you're willing to step in and get involved on a crucial board, knowing you back since I first elected, because you have been, as you said, very involved in the community, in the county. Have a lot of respect for, you know, your approach and the way that you think through issues, and I look forward to your contributions to that board, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir, Council, any other questions for Mr. Hartman? We'll, I think, take up a resolution to formally appoint, but this time, I think we're finished. Thank you. Okay, so now is public participation portion of the meeting. We are on item number six. If you do intend to speak, we do ask that you please fill out a card. I've got a few up here now, and whenever you can get to it, and please bring it forward to our deputy, and we'll make sure that you're heard. First card I have here in front of me is, and I'm sorry if this is not the exact order, but Veronica Clifford. Ms. Clifford, we got three minutes, so when the light, I should have said for everyone, when it goes yellow, it's about 30 more seconds left, and thank you. If you don't mind, tell us your name, and I see here you wanted to speak about rules here, so thank you.
My name's Veronica Clifford. I'm relatively new to the Cape Canaveral area. I am, as you guys were saying, you know, how does the city operate? So, I've had some issues with code enforcement, so I'm trying to figure out how the rules operate, and I'm thinking city manager might be the person to help me. So, I put some treason in code enforcement, said reason city property needs to be removed. I need some help here. I don't know the rules, and I went and I took pictures of everything, and I'm actually using a lot of the treason things that you all are using to beautify it, because that's what drew me to Cape Canaveral. As was mentioned, it's a small community, your open areas are fantastic, so I didn't really understand, because I have pictures and everything, which I could set something up and show, but I need to know why they're telling me I need to remove these when palm tree roots are a ball system versus the oaks that you have that's spread out. And so, I figured I'm going to come and ask, because a lot of the things I ask, they're telling me no, and my question is, is who do I go to to say, hey, let's review this? Is this okay? Can we do this? Your rules might say no, but are the rules accurate? I want to follow the code, but I'm just not the kind of person that's, when you just say no because it's our property, I didn't know to ask. So, who do I go to ask, and how do I go about, how do I go about this for various other things?
Thank you. I'm happy to, our city manager, if not himself, could point you in the right direction.
Absolutely. Our community development director, Tamsin Bell, seated behind you, waving her hand. There you go. And if you want to set an appointment with her, she can discuss the matter with you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I've got one from Mr. Dale Cox. Now, it's to speak on the public hearing item. Now, when we take that item up, we will open it up, but if you need to be somewhere, or you want to speak now, you're more than welcome to.
All right.
Yes, thank you. I'll make sure. Brad Purvell. Good, good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for what you do for our community.
I got two cards here, I think, just making sure, okay. I think we're good.
Which one would you like me to start with?
Well, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like the last card related to any item. I think you want to make some general comments?
Yes, sir.
Nothing's, okay, yes, sir. The floor is yours.
My name is Brad Purvell. I live at the corner of Jackson and Magnolia. The last time I gave some public information, I wrote a book to every one of you, elected officials and appointed officials, and it was about spending our money. And what I want to say is, thank you very much. I understand that you have kept in the budget for this coming year, the San Piper Park project, for that to be redeveloped and updated. Thank you. I thank you, and our kids, thank you. Secondly, I understand the batting cage has been approved also for the Little League. Again, I thank you for that. I still disagree about the concession stand and the negative 85% ROI on that. I believe that money could have been spent somewhere else. Hot dogs don't recruit kids, it's coaches and equipment. And talking to some officials, apparently we are going to try and update the dugout, so I want to say thank you very much for that, believing in the children, believing in Space Coast Little League. FYI, for fall ball, Space Coast Little League has five teams, most they've ever had for fall ball, and they're growing. And lastly, go Blue Jays. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second card, I think, it looks like it's related to Cape View. We obviously added that as a discussion item, but if you'd like to speak on that as well?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I didn't know it was going to be added as a discussion item, and I had no idea that was even going to be brought up. Before I get involved in the elementary school, I want to put a shout out to the Park and Rec Department. Trunk or Treat was hilarious. It was a well-attended event, so the Park and Rec Department needs to really get a round of applause. But Cape View, what is the city going to do or planning on doing regarding the possible closure of our school? Can the city buy or do a lease/purchase agreement with the Board of Education in Beavard County? Rumors have it that their final decision is in January. Rumors have it that a developer is going to buy the property and develop the property. Perhaps we can come up with a creative idea and create a charter school there, or an after-school program, something for the children. That land is highly valuable, and it's an asset to the city. Here's my snarkiness. If we can spend a million dollars to tear down a building to have a dog park parking lot, how come we can't buy that property if they are going to close the school? That property can be an asset and will be an asset if the city can annex it, buy it, lend/lease it. You go to a charter school system, now you have revenue because they'll be renting it from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the last card I have. Want to make sure, is there anyone else that would like to speak? If so, please come forward. Ms. Bass? You can bring them forward there, and we'll make sure to get them. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I guess we misunderstood. Do you, I need to bring this card to you?
No, you're good. If you want, come on forward, if you're ready now to speak, please. Thank you.
All right. You ready for me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Melissa Bass. I've met some of you, but some of you I haven't yet. I'm a parent at Cape View Elementary. I wanted to speak to you guys about the school, and here it comes. We love our school, and there are three things I want to get across today, that we see it, the idea of consolidating our school and losing the public school as a bad idea for our city in terms of turning away families and not getting more families in, and the families we have could leave, and the school is such a valuable place, it's the heart of our city. We really, really want to keep it. And the idea of busing all of our kids to Roosevelt is a problem for many reasons, one of them being this bikeable/walkable program that's been going on in the city for the last decade or more, and the idea that our kids can't bike and walk to school would seem to contradict that, so I don't like that. And we, I just don't want to see us turning into a place that's basically parking lots and rentals, and there's no soul to our city. And having kids and having a school makes people come back, and makes people stay, and makes it worth being here. And we have a lot of low-income and at-risk kids that go to the school, that walk to the school because their families don't have cars, and so the idea of a kindergartner getting on a bus in the dark to get to school on a, possibly an hour bus ride, both ways, is just not, not okay. So, we want to look at that issue. And so, there's just a lot we could talk about here, but the main thing I want to do is talk to you guys and see if we can set up something where you guys can work with the public, with the parents, and we can try to get something going, so that we can, when the school board meeting comes, there's one coming up next week, but it's not the official one. there's one coming up next week, but it's not the official one for this issue. But when that comes, we would like to have the elected officials with us so that we can speak the language of the board and have real solutions and not just be upset parents crying. But we want to really try to fight for the kids in a smart way. So I'd like to ask for your help.
Good evening. I am Rajesh Ravisankar. And I'm the PTO president of Cape View Elementary. My child goes to Cape View. And before I start, thanks to the sheriff's office, they helped us with the trunk or treat. So I want to recognize them before I start. The first thing is, Cape View Elementary is the only school in the city of Cape Canaveral. Now, I want to bring this to the attention of everyone. What is going to be the economic impact if the school were to be consolidated and moved out of Cape Canaveral? What is the economic impact to the city? And like Melissa touched upon, our school has 90% of the kids that are walkers, meaning the parents walk the kids to school. They do not have a vehicle. So if the school were to be consolidated to Cocoa Beach, and if there was an emergency, there is no way for the parents to go and get their kids. So that is a huge problem. I'm not sure if that was thought out. But the third thing that I want to, you know, bring to the forum is, we would like to have some representation from the elected officials at the school board meeting, which is happening on the 28th at 5:00 PM at BPS Building in Viara. So that they would definitely recognize someone from the city and when their opinion is voiced about the school's potential closure. And I also want to request the mayor and the members of the council to work with PTO, because we have a team that is strategizing the action plan to prevent the consolidation. Because we want someone from the city to work with us, to brainstorm, to collaborate, and see what we can do to, you know, stop this, I would say, this huge disruption that is going to affect the community, kids, parents, everyone. So, yeah, I am the PTO president. And we have a website that we started. It's called KeepCapeViewOpen.com. So if anyone wants to go check us out, we have a petition going on. And we have social media presence. We have reached out to mainstream media outlets to create awareness to the community so that people do not wake up at the last minute and were like, whoa, we've just missed the opportunity to rally, gather, and protest to potentially stop this from happening. So again, we're requesting someone from the city to work with us to see how we can put our best foot forward. So that's, that's pretty much it. We do not want the school to be closed. Because one, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And we all have that discussion item, I think, this, at the end of this meeting, to get into, I think, everything we heard. Mayor Protim Kellum?
I just have a question. Do you have a date for your strategizing, brainstorming, meeting with the PTO?
It is, it is ongoing, like, but we're gonna, we had a meeting yesterday. But then we're gonna have, what we heard from the principal was the board is going to have a town hall. That was planned for the last week of October, but now it has been moved to the first week of November. So like, we will have to do our strategizing before that so that we can, when we have the town hall, we have a talking point.
So the information on that would be in the website that you're talking about?
Yes. Like, we also have our Instagram page. Like, it's the same handle, KeepCapeViewOpen. So we're gonna, we're gonna be posting regular updates on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last card I have is John Benton.
Okay, I'm here asking you guys for my code reduction hearing again. If you would have given me one 10 years ago when I came and asked you, because Randall said he knew I didn't live in that warehouse, that I lived on Tyler. I don't even know the man, but he knew me. Said I mowed his yard two times, back in 91. He wasn't even the mayor, didn't know who he was. And this board should have given me a code reduction hearing then. You should have pressed charges against Kevin Mann that owns the Spaceman Storage up there. He lied under oath. Said that nobody was living in his warehouses up there. I gave the board pictures of them up there. Some of them had their pants down at the dumpster, brushing their teeth at my warehouse door. And you find me guilty of living in there with a cop in the unit next to me? I knew sitting in that meeting when they were mocking me and laughing at me that if I didn't blink an eye, they were going to find me guilty and I was going to get every one of them in that meeting fired. Where are they? They aren't here, are they? You could have put them in jail, Kevin Mann, for lying. Lying to the cops. Oh, I don't have any, but, and then when Mr. Dickey, the only one to help me out, says that he had, in the email, that he asked Kevin Mann, hey, does your son live in the warehouses? He says, no, he's a security guard. Why didn't he have him come in and testify? Because he's a pedophile. He's on the sex offenders list. And you want to, look at what's going on with Epstein, or whatever his name is. He gets 13 months in jail in Florida and convicted? What is this, man? This is old boys' club here where you don't do anything to the pedophiles? You got a lawyer over there. It's his fault because his lawyer wouldn't let me defend myself that night after Kevin testified against me. If I would have had a skull Jew hat on, that would have never happened, or a Catholic collar. But he picked on me because he probably knew that I came forward on the Jew school in Winter Park when I was 37 years old. And the preacher, he got five to eight years in jail. I only did it to help the people out. And it was hard to come in there and tell a female detective what happened to me. And I know for a fact that six people came in the day before me that she asked if they would testify. And they wouldn't do it for political reasons. What's wrong with you guys? You fired everybody? You fired, you made David Dickey there sign a clause so he wouldn't defame you? Because he knew that all the things that was happening, all the favors to the people that wasn't getting fines and ones that was, it was the board. They were...
Is there anyone else who intends to speak? I think, thank you for getting those. We had three more there. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public participation. And I still have Mr. Cox, your card here when we get to the public hearing item. Don't let me forget. You can wave. I've done that before, but we'll make sure you're heard. Excellent. Thank you. That brings us to item number seven, which is, are the managers matters? And just for the public, with our new city manager coming on board, this is something that he proposed and has implemented. And I found it to be, find it to be very valuable, things that maybe aren't necessarily on the agenda that he wants to bring forward to this council. And the goal is that he goes through all of them. And council, if we have any questions, we let him get through them and we can certainly ask in the end. And with that, city manager.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. So item 7-1 is the vacation rental report, which you have in the backup documentation. I'll entertain any questions, or we can just move on to 7-2. 7-2 is community center membership. And this is an item that I'm bringing to the council's attention for future discussion in meeting with you all prior, individually prior to this meeting, giving you the background on the procedure we have in place at the C5 Center, where numerous residents, both city and non-city residents, through membership or participation in insurance programs, pay their fee to use our facility. And then the city gets its cut of the fee. And the fee cut that we're getting is not in line with our city ordinance. So it's a program that is, has some merit. And the Leisure Services Committee would like to conduct a joint workshop with the council to discuss all those things that they have discovered. And I think they have some proposals on maybe how the city can move forward. So given that this is an ordinance issue when it comes to our fee structure, it's important that council get involved so that we can chart that course forward. So mayor, if you wanted to discuss having a workshop, yes or no? And if so, propose some, a date? And I know we have John Mayberry here from Recreation, who can take any information back to the committee.
Okay. Yes, I would think that if some dates were sent out to the council, we can, we can accept that via email and try to find something that works for all of us. Council, does that sound okay for a joint workshop? We did that with P&amp;Z on a different land use matter, I think, and it was very valuable.
I think they're going to prefer that you meet on their next scheduled meeting, if that's possible. But I'll get with John after, council, and with Molly and the director, and we'll discuss how we're going to approach that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. The next item is a community, I'm sorry, a city facilities update. And John, if you don't mind, come forward. You've had your finger on the pulse of that. I can give it the update, but you can do it far better than me. You've been out there actually probably slinging a hammer or two, so.
Is this on? Okay. Good afternoon, good evening. Okay, so right now we started. I don't know if any of you have been over by the Cape Canaveral Park, but we began the installation of the upgrade components on the splash pad yesterday. Today, we completed the plumbing portion. Thursday, we have the crew that's coming in to hook up the electrical, the new ultraviolet systems that we're installing. And then we have, the Department of Health has come through and do their inspection to make sure everything is good to go as far as chemicals, the feeders and everything. And everything is brand-new. And it is all industrial, commercial-grade equipment this time. So we're anxious, we're hopeful to be up very soon, have it running again. The other thing we're, is getting close to finishing up our portion of the concession stand. The only component that's left to install is the mini-split air conditioning system we purchased. One head is going to be downstairs in the concession stand, and the other is going to be upstairs in the announcer's booth. We discussed before, we purchased a brand-new scoreboard year before last. And I think it was used in one game to try it out. And it's just so uncomfortable up there in the heat in the summertime that nobody wants to go up there and sit for an entire ballgame. So we're taking, addressing that and making some minor changes upstairs to the floor. We've done some work where there had been some leakage over the years and cut that old rotten wood out and replaced it and going to paint the floor and get the head for the AC up there. And then that will be ready to go. Currently, we're on schedule for the third week of November to have that done. That's the quickest I could get a contractor in to do the installation for us. I'd like to point out and thank Hoag Electric. They did the electrical for us that had to be redone completely. And they did it as a gratis for the Space Coast Little League, yes. Did a very good job. And so just want to thank them publicly for what they did for us. And the other thing we have is the roof repair or replacement, actually over at Nancy Hansen. That was begun yesterday also, and those guys are moving. I mean, they're doing good work. They've ripped out the old fascia. And you can really see it was in worse shape than we ever thought it was. Now that you can see. But they've got approximately, maybe between an eighth and a quarter of the activity room on the front of the building, that part is already ripped off. And they've got the new subroof and everything on it there. So it's, they're doing a really good job. So, and then the tennis courts, pickleball courts, that's moving along. They're out painting this afternoon. I went over and visited Marcy. And just, everything's going on, you know? We wait and wait and wait and chase vendors and contractors. And then everything hits at the same week. So we got a lot going on, got a lot of balls we're juggling right now. But you have any questions?
I do not. Just a comment of thank you so much. I know that obviously the splash pad, and you know, my position was, I knew that our city staff was doing everything that they could. And when permits are in higher regulatory authorities, that's not us, the state waiting. And I look forward to seeing it all finished, doing it right. And I know some of these are, take much longer than I think anyone wanted. But very encouraging. Thank you.
Yeah, we want permits. We want to, you know, like you said, do everything by the book and plans, things that we didn't have when we came, Molly and I came along. So whoever comes after us, we want to have a firm foundation for those people to be able to go back and see where we started and, you know, whatever direction they may choose to go in. But...
Councilmember Jackson?
I have just a couple of questions for you, John, if you don't mind. One thing is, I love lights. That's a strange thing for me, but I do. So what kind of lights are going to be on the splash pad?
On the splash pad?
Yeah, you were saying new lights would be installed? Is that what you said?
No, it's a UV light that cleans the water.
Aw, man, I got all excited.
We're always looking, though, for things to upgrade and make things nicer, though.
Okay. That, all right. Thank you. And that was my, that was one of my questions. Then, let's see, now I got so flustered, what is my, if I, if I figure out the second one, I'll get back with you. But I was hoping, I was excited thinking it was going to have some cool lights. It has a UV light, which needs it, but, okay, thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
City manager.
Thank you, John. Item 7.4, city personnel update. So we begin our interviews for the city engineer position. We have another applicant in the queue to interview, and we're waiting to hear back from another. And we'll keep the application process open until we find just the right person for that position. We do have an opening for a permit clerk at our front desk, and we're looking to fill that position internally. So we hope to have some, some news for the council on that soon. 7-5 is Patriots Park Community Garden. And this is another item that, just opening it up for discussion. The, these two amenities are side-by-side, as you know, north of our city, and they're adjacent to a car wash. There is currently no parking for either one of the amenities. The community garden has seen less activity over the past several months than in the recent past. The park, the, the community garden is not closed. I heard from some of you that, that there was a belief that it had been closed. There may have been a miscommunication on that. However, if, the statement about looking to move it might have, lead folks to believe that why bother trying to plant something if we're going to move that community garden? So we just want to open up some dialogue about these two amenities. They are side-by-side. There is no parking, public parking. There is private parking, and there is gate access to that private parking. But as I've expressed to all of you in individual meetings prior to here, you know, the frequency and volume of that use and not having any parking, we would like to see about fixing that and maybe moving the community garden to another location that was, is suitable for that and converting that space into some parking, but not paved parking. It would be parking where, you know, the water can go somewhere and permeate into the ground. And there was also previous plan, a place, I believe, for Long Point Road, where there were some other parking proposed for that area. So just to kick it around with council, see how you feel, and we'll move staff in whichever direction that you decide.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the final update is for 7.6 City Hall Air Conditioners. You all have some backup documentation and we had the conversation about the AC unit last budget during our budget hearings. This is an item that was not funded in the current budget with a plan to fund it should we have to through contingency and our R&amp;R account. So there could be some other money available this budget cycle depending on how we spend on certain things. But at the end of the day, you have the report that was sent to us by our service technician. The information that you received, I can walk you through it very quickly, is.
And just to make sure we're thinking the same thing, Mr. City Manager, the, not in the packet, the printouts that are stapled?
Yes, thank you. It was a, it was a handout provided to council prior to the meeting and there might be a document we can put online or no, I'm not sure. There you go. So there's a document online for the, the community to see. So Southeast Services of CFL Incorporated, they, they serviced our units and they provided breakdown for those items that are in need of replacement. And rather than go through them line by line, we've tallied them up. And it would appear that if we were to replace all of those things that need replacing, the city would be looking at $128,000 estimated to just replace the parts that the two units on the roof need. That is the estimate. You also have an estimate that shows our repair history between two different vendors and the, the total repair history of 101,000 on the first through Southeast Services.
That's this table here?
Yes.
So every, that's impressive, thank you. Since we've had it.
And then if you look at the Johnson Controls at 6939, that's another vendor. If you tally those two, our repair history is 115,583, I'm sorry, 108,779 for our total repair history. We've obviously have a service history at over 11,000. So between our repair history and our service history, those AC units have cost over the years since their installation, actual activation, I believe, was 2017 or 2018? 2018, 2016, they were installed, yes, and we didn't occupy the building in, right away. And so we didn't have any repairs those first few years, as you can imagine. And that's when we blew through the warranties. So there are currently no warranties on these units. But the total repair and service history totals 120,363. That's, that's repair and service history. And then if you, if you go back to your last page, and I know I have you flipping, actually it's the memo that we had on the screen for the, the community, the estimate to replace the entire unit, both units, 300 to 350,000 at this point. So I've also given council a one-page document that outlines the, the city employee's plan should the events, should these units fail. And you could just see at your leisure what we're prepared to do to work in the building should we have to repair, I mean, replace one or both units at the same time. We have a combination of working in the building with fans, working from home remotely depending on the position. But you can go through those items at your leisure. So we, we certainly have a plan in place to, to replace these units unless we're directed to repair only. Either way, I think this is one of those things that's going to continue to plague us every year until we just replace them.
Wow, thank you. The, is that the last one? Yeah, on the managers' matters, I think it is.
It is, yep.
So just to make sure, I'm referring to the table where it totals up the, the historical record, basically maintenance records with costs, is very helpful. And it looks like, yeah, the Southeastern Services was a vendor providing support there. That totals, to recap, 101,840 with the first one in January of 2020. Example, condenser fan blade for $700, all the way to, you know, I see compressor leaks at 18,000 and, as you said, 101,000. And then Johnson Controls, I think a separate vendor, is that right? Goes back to?
Yes, we engaged a separate vendor to do some services for us and those were the costs that, that they charged.
So November of 2019, I think, is the first one there and it totals just under 7,000?
Yep.
And that is... Are those to the total? What was, you said 120,000 or is it 108?
So, let me get back to my...
If I add the?
Yeah. So what I did was I, I gave you several numbers. One number was the total to repair the units as, over time, as charged to us by Southeast Services, which was 101,840. And then during the separate period where we contracted services with Johnson Controls, their total was 6939. And so adding those two numbers, we came up with 108,779. That, that's the total, the total repair history, you know, parts, whatever. But there's also the service history that coincides with that number and that was on another document where over the course of the years of these units, the repairs and service calls.
Preventative maintenance?
Exactly.
I see, that's 11,583.
Yes.
Okay, now I see. So 108 plus that, we're looking at roughly 120.
And in, in one hand, you can say that's just the cost of doing business because you have to maintain your equipment. But when you're repairing parts, replacing parts that go out and they continue to go out and the units get old and, you know, the, the situation here with the salt there. I did not mention also that their memo contains a comment about the, it's a device that, that they don't make anymore and they've had to just kind of lock them in the open position so they continue to function. And if we had to repair those, they would have to be custom-made because York AC does not make those anymore. The, they're called, the economizers in the units are seized and are just manually opening to a minimum. It's about three-fourths of the way down in that first paragraph. Last sentence, they would have to be custom-made. You can't get them from York anymore.
City manager?
Yes.
Yes. So if, if council decides that they do want to do this, we will have to do a budget amendment. And basically the way to work is we've already identified where we would get the money from, three different sources within the budget. And so that budget amendment would show the council is approving, you know, maybe a CIP for the AC. And then it would show in the amendment how we reduced the different areas where we're taking the money from R&amp;R contingency and potentially the reduction in the cost of the fire truck. Those things would be contained in that, in that amendment. So everything would be extremely transparent in terms of, you know, we had the money within the budget in different places and then we will just have to move that money to pay for the air conditioner. And you got to do a budget amendment though, because it's not in the budget.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Um, so, Mr. City Manager, I see that this was a York.
Yes.
Okay. And I know personally, because I was one of those that bought a York with a 10-year warranty. Oh, our warranty covers corrosion and all these things. However, upon the unit being installed for a while, it was corroding half, much quicker than other manufacturers' brands. And we had discussed in the past the fact that there are some vendors here that have treated AC systems for coastal environments. Have we looked at any other brands other than this York?
Yes, we have. And if I can invite Lisa Day to come to the microphone, she obviously is our building maintenance manager.
And before Lisa jumps in here, yeah, York is not even, will not even be a consideration because it does, it is not the type of AC that should even be this close to the, the ocean. And Lisa's going to give you the other elements to get the right AC. And of course, this will take time because it's not like you could just go buy that at Home Depot. So it, there's going to be a long lead time on this, but go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. The vendor that we currently use has told us right from the beginning that York was probably not the right product to put on our roof because of the salt air and that a carrier or a train unit would probably be better. They're better suited for the salt air. To answer your question, I did ask Southeast, probably about two years ago when we first brought this to council, about the coating that goes on to the air conditioning systems. And they said that they can do it either from the factory or an aftermarket type spray on formula. Obviously, that's going to cost more. So that could be something that we asked them about, but we're going to have to, you know, add in that additional factor.
Okay. And, and see, I hear that you spray-on, for example, that, that answer that they've given us. The other one, the other vendor that I know of, they dip theirs. So they were dipping components and it's a different process. Spray-on worries me because if that was that easy, we'd all be spraying our cars and everything else, right? Because I'm going to tell you everything where else out here.
So I'm not, excuse me, I'm not 100% sure, but I think if it's from the factory, it's dipped. If it's aftermarket, it's a spray-on. So I wanted to clarify that.
And see, and my point is, we're looking at one vendor. Was this the vendor that put all of this on our roof before?
Well, the, I went to the vendor that is servicing the products now. If this were to be put out, we would have to go out to bid for it and get different quotes and bids from, from various.
That was my question.
And that involves Tim. So I went to the vendor that we currently use because I have a good working relationship with them for service for our current air conditioner system. I wanted to also clarify on the other sheets where we had Southeast and Johnson Controls. Johnson Controls does the programming of the system. When we had issues at the beginning, Johnson Controls did, worked with, with Southeast because we weren't sure if the problems were mechanical or if, or if they were control-related. So that's why Johnson came in at the beginning. They were charging us for their services, but we found out that Southeast could do the same services for us at a lower cost.
Okay, so Southeast is not the one that installed the units when the building was built?
No, I believe, I'm the contractor for the building. I'm not sure who he had used. That was before my time. I don't know if you...
Obviously, you know, obviously went out for bid and they gave the, that contractor for this building, they gave them the contract and of course, they're the ones that chose that AC for this building.
Right, and I get, I get it that it would have been through the contractor process, so I'm not saying anything about staff or anything like this and I appreciate all y'all's efforts. But even myself learned a hard lesson about York, you know? So I want to make sure whatever we have has the best coastal rating that we can get.
Absolutely.
And that's why I was asking those things.
Yeah, absolutely. How they arrived at York, I don't know, but maybe it was low cost.
Yeah, and hearing, hearing you Lisa tell us that it'll, you know, there will be a bid process for it, then that makes it, you know?
Yeah, it will go, I mean, the only thing is if it fails tomorrow, I, you know, we would have to probably look at the bid process versus, you know, a sole source type thing because the bid process is going to take a while. I think, you know, with Tim and Laura going out, it probably would take, you know, 60 to 90 days for putting a bid out. And then we would have to work beyond that as far as what's in stock, what units we get and that. If it were to fail tomorrow, we'd have to make that decision whether you wait the three months to put it out to bid or if you go sole source.
And I think after that, Southeast, I think, gave Lisa an idea. Would they say, Lisa, it could take four to five months to actually potentially get ACs like that for this building?
So it depends on the unit.
Yeah.
One of the other factors involved is something called the curbing. I don't know if you've all been up on the roof or whatever, but the curbing wraps up around the air conditioning system. That curbing is built for the current York system. It's not that we have to rebuild the curbing, but what happens is you put in a piece in there, an adapter, to fit the new floor plan of whatever shape air conditioner you have. So that may be a little bit extra, but we, we're not tied to that type of equipment to fit that floor plan.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions. I'm done, City Man, Mayor.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Willis?
Is there any sort of a facilities contract with other municipalities or Brevard County that we could tag on to?
Like a piggyback?
We, we could certainly ask that question. I could get with Tim tomorrow and we could, we could delve into that. A lot of times with a lot of things, yes, there, there is something, but we haven't had to delve into air conditioners, so that's a question that's...
Well, I mean, it, it could be worth it to find out.
Oh, we'll ask the question.
Well, we believe, you know, time is of the essence.
Yes, so we won't spend a lot of time.
If council's approval is to replace the units, we would look to say that this is something where we need to go sole source and get the process started now because of the time it could take to ultimately happen versus like Lisa was saying, going through a bid process and adding that time on to the order and waiting for the unit.
But at the same time, Don, we are, we'll be able, we'll be able to look at, answer your question there, I think.
Okay.
Relatively quickly.
Well, just, just reading over the what happens if, you know, it's, it would be, not that I'm asking for the calisthenics on putting a number together, but that's got to impact staff and costs and everything else with...
Well, my biggest concern in this building, if the air conditioner malfunctioned and it was months and we were using blowers or whatever, it's going to have an effect on things like the doors and things like that. That could cost us thousands of dollars. So that, that's a concern.
Well, humidity is, humidity is going to be impacted, not to mention, I, I'm sure the, the server room is probably protected.
There's a special air conditioner in there, so that's unaffected?
Yeah. So that would be one of my concerns is all the other things that we're not putting out to bid, that it's going to cost us, so.
And one other thing, just so you know, I mean, this wasn't something, this was something we discussed in the CIP workshops and that, a possibility, maybe we can hold off. This kind of came to us really last week. They came in to do a preventative maintenance on the equipment and showed me what was failing on it. And I brought the city manager up to the roof and they actually showed us what was failing. Our unit one, we've had a condenser that's been down for about a year and we've been running it on 75%, knowing that, do we put the money into repairing that, knowing that we wanted to replace it because it's an expensive piece to the puzzle? Now we've had our second condenser on that one, which is failing. So if that fails, we're now running 50% on the first floor for air conditioning. So that's, it became critical as of last week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other statements? I just want to say when it's not, I guess, optimally running, the electricity cost is something as well that I would assume is, with a new system or working well, is going to improve and over the life of the system, that matters. And the last thing... And the last thing is like, you know, with the solar array and the other things that we're looking at, might already be all over this, but there are some, maybe it's just related to heat pumps, but some pretty aggressive tax credits that, obviously, the city isn't a taxable entity, but the direct payment might help, but it might be one of those things where you got to kind of buy up so high that it, but with the credit, it, it might work well. And thank you so much. I've learned that air conditioners are expensive and it looks like 2024 is, the date of those was not fun. A lot of repairs and it makes sense. Yeah, 6,000, about 1,600 a month, rough math, over the six years, just preventative and preventative is the small part of it. And so, thank you. I hope, I don't think we'll get it installed before the concession stand many split, but it'll hopefully be soon. So any other comments? City Manager?
No, just looking for, for some direction from council.
On how to move forward between the proposed, there's basically two options, I see. We got the 300 to 350,000 for replacing the two RTUs. And that would resolve, I mean, that's a new, complete new system.
That's total replacement.
And then the total for the going in and making parts repairs is on page.
Right. That was on the last page of your handout.
The last one. Oh, well.
To repair, everything that they've proposed is $128,000.
That was the, okay, thank you. The 128. So to me, I think it's really about where the warranties can come into play on this one, now that we're actually controlling our destiny as opposed to the mercy of a contractor and who they subbed and the products they chose. And so I think that, you know, with a good warranty that we can lean on and rely, so that we can, whether, you know, it's 10 years on paper, but is it really 10? Or, I mean, we're in year six. And so it's unfortunate that, but I think that's, that's just what they're doing now.
It would actually be 10 because the, this building, the architecture was done in 2015.
Okay.
It was built in 2016, 2017, you know, was when the, 2016, 2017 was when the air conditioning was installed and we moved in in January of 2018. So the air conditioning has to be in the building to condition the air when they're doing all of the woodwork and that. So it was actually 2016 when it went in.
It was exposed for a year and a half before we even.
It will be 10 years coming up.
Okay. Got it.
Council?
But those are the, do you have repair or a full replacement? Is that right? 128 to repair. It's kind of hard to see how much runway that would give us. You know, I don't think it would come with any warranties or anything.
It wouldn't.
Anyone would give us warranties.
I mean, maybe on those particular parts would have a warranty, but certainly not for the unit. I don't know if you've gotten that information.
I haven't, but the other thing to consider is what the city manager was saying about the, the louvers. Those are seized open and they manually adjusted them to give us a medium air return airflow. They're supposed to work with the system to open and close. So those, York does not offer replacement parts for. If we were to do everything in that 128,000 would be an additional for those parts and those would have to be custom made. And they told me that that would not be cheap. So to redo everything would be upwards of 128,000.
Minimum, I think, and plus.
Plus those louvers that are key for adjusting the air.
Okay.
Airflow.
Got it.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
I just think that, you know, instead of throwing good money after bad, if we can maybe piggyback with the county or find the money that we need to replace, I think that would be the way to go.
For a new system.
For a new system. Just let's find the money and get it done. So I don't know what, we need a motion or?
Well, repair or new? I think you're leaning towards new. Do we want to do new system?
Yeah.
To get?
I think, I think it behooves us to take that 128,000 and put it towards a new system.
Yeah.
Because we can replace the 128,000 with the parts and then we could have another 128,000 of something else broken. So, you know, we, we have an old system.
Right.
As much as I don't want to delve into the, the funds, I think we're, we're at that point that I was afraid of before.
The councilmember Jackson?
Well, if, if it's as old as it is and it's a York, it's going to be rusting a bit soon if it hasn't already. I can, I can personally attest to that. I think it's ironic that just last month, we were discussing this and it's already something we have to act on. I think that's ironic. That's how things work. But I say go with the, the best coastal units that we can find because however those Yorks got installed, just like I said, mine, hey, I fell for the 10-year warranty. Yeah, they keep attaching parts to rust if, if they can. So we can't have people not being cool during the summer. Right now, we're pretty good, what, temperature wise, but otherwise, you know, we have to look at what we have to do. So I'd say, but I'd say new versus putting parts in.
Just my quick math to what we're saying, and this is very rough. I'm just eyeballing it. 2024, of the, those 100, 1,000 repairs that were detailed, half of it was in that year. So it's getting more expensive each year to a point. So I think we're all, city manager, it sounds like consensus for a new system. And we heard, you know, if we can piggyback, great ideas. If we can get, you know, great warranties. And I think we're going to go with this one, kind of, the benefit of going through that is obviously, we're going to navigate our way to not do that.
When we look at this too, something that really concerned about, and we'll, we'll do our homework on this, is that, let's say we got a train and we want to know that the unit we're getting five to seven years from now, somebody doesn't, if something goes out or something, the company doesn't come back to us and say, oh, you know, we don't make that part for that unit anymore. We don't, we want to know that for the next 10 years, that anything that happens with that, we could replace the parts. And we don't get that from York.
And frankly, where are the parts coming from is important as well. Because where they're manufactured can impact the amount of time it takes to get them here if they don't have them in, in inventory.
So do we need a motion there or?
I think the city manager was looking for direction. Out of those two, new.
I heard five votes.
Yeah.
Got some consensus.
I don't think we need to do it. I think consensus. If anyone opposes not going new, I'm hearing nothing. And yeah, there's got to be good scrap value on those old systems too. Maybe the new vendor will credit some.
Or you just put it near the road. You put it near the road and somebody will pick it up.
I don't know. I think, yeah.
You'll need a crane to pick those up.
Thank you, council. That concludes Managers Matters.
That's great. Thank you. Really important items.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. So now we're at 7:20 here. We've got our consent agenda items. Looks like we have 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4. Councilmember Jackson, you had mentioned potentially pulling one to discuss. If there are any others that we'd like to pull, we can do that now and then vote for the remaining consent agenda. So councilmember Jackson, which item?
8.3, the rooftop solar array on the Brevard County Sheriff's Office Building. I had a couple of questions on it.
Okay. 8.3, council. Any other items that we want to pull? We've got a set of minutes. 8.1, a resolution for the P&amp;Z formally appointing Mr. Hartman to our P&amp;Z board and the canaveral fire pumper replacement. So.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, A1, A2, and A4, eight, four. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum and a second by councilmember Willis to approve consent agenda items 8.1, 8.2, and 8.4. Any further discussion? Hearing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And councilmember Willis?
Four.
Consent agenda items passed 5-0. Councilmember Jackson, item number 8.3.
Thank you, Zach, for staying here.
Of course.
Okay.
Hit me with it.
In the project details, I had a question because it's, it says, I have two questions.
Sure.
One is the rooftop solar array will be designed to be battery ready, meaning that in the future, it can be upgraded with internal battery banks to hold electricity produced by the panels and work in tandem with the existing generator, prolonging the off-grid operations, therefore providing an enhanced level of energy redundancy and security. So what we're going in with for BCSO will still be running off a generator? Is that correct?
That's correct, but it would be in tandem. So also something to keep in mind that I didn't put in here is that the generator that runs BCSO right now also co-runs the Cape Center if it goes out. So it's doing a double duty.
Okay.
So the batteries would help to prolong the fuel, fuel life essentially because it could take load off, say like midday or at night when the panels are not functioning because there's no sun. They would be discharging into the building's electrical grid.
Mm-hmm.
And the generator could take a break essentially.
Okay.
And then as it would, as they would drain, the generator would kick back in, do its job, and they would continue to cycle forward.
But the way this is written makes it sound like we don't have the batteries that that's an additional option.
Oh, yes. That's, that's correct. So it's a phased project. So at the start, we, we start with this to actually get the power source, a secondary power source. And then once that's finished, we would come in with a second project to add the banks as needed. And because battery technology's increased so much and gotten a lot more advanced, we could even be looking at systems that could be brought in as like a mobile option that plug and play, where you could plug it in so you could leave the island with it if you had to, you know, and, and whatnot. So, yeah, it'd be looked as a two-phase project. This is phase one.
Okay. That, that clarifies that. Thank you very much. And I did mention this to the city manager when I met with him. And so, city manager, I would still like to see if we can get on any of the buildings, Cape Center, or, help me with the one next door. I just had a brain fog.
Nancy. Cape Center?
Yeah, Cape Center.
Cape Center and then C5.
C5, we have it.
I was hoping that we might be able to get some information as far as analytics on what our FPL bills are for those buildings.
I have that.
Before and after, so that we can have those in our records as far as
Sure.
the cost savings for the solar arrays.
Yeah. So we did certainly do that after because since it is a grant, they'll want to see statistics. But also, we have stats for the community center. We believe the current system there is saving about 12,000 a year off, off utility bills, about a thousand dollars a month. So it's pretty good. And it's offsetting about 54% on average of the building's usage per year.
And on C5, it has batteries?
No.
Not yet. That was one of the ones that we have on a CIP.
We have an independent system now that we were able to get at really low cost that we, is mobile. They're literally little, like, look like backpacks that you wheel up and you could take them out. Because I really like the ability to, A, have it be mobile in the sense you could go power other things.
Mm-hmm.
Like Friday Fest activities or, you know,
Right.
movie in the park or whatever. And if there's ever a disaster event where you know there's going to be massive flooding or just some calamity where we shouldn't be here, you can take the system inland and move it, use it for whatever you need, then bring it back and deploy it as needed. I love that versatility. I vision that for probably doing something with BCSO. So.
Okay. Wonderful. That's, those were my questions. Thank you very much, Zach.
Thank you.
Or host a city council meeting on the beach.
Or host a city council meeting on the beach.
Zach was, brought that wonderful idea forward there and that's great. So councilmember Jackson, those were concluded?
Those were my questions. I just wanted to clarify how this was going to provide backup from the generator if there were no batteries. That didn't work with me. Now I know it's two phases. Thank you, Zach.
Yes, it would be kind of a useless project without that.
That would be a difficult thing to do without the second phase.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda number 8.3.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum and a second by councilmember Jackson to approve item 8.3. Any further discussion?
Hearing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
Willis.
Councilmember Jackson?
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you.
Pass. Consent agenda item 8.3 passes 5-0, which now brings us to our first item for action, item 9.1. We're at an hour and a half point. We typically try to take a quick break. Council, do we want to keep going through or take a five-minute break? Let's take a break, recess. Yes. City Clerk's office?
That's why I had the brain fog. And don't you have to approve the consent agenda as amended with?
Thank you. Or is that
No.
the way we went about it? Is okay?
No, you, I think the council approved three of the items and then approved the last one separately.
I was.
So you have two separate motions? And that's acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to take a break. We're roughly at 7:30. Try to get back in here in five, 10 minutes, whatever we need. When we're all back, I think we can get started. So we'll reconvene shortly. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, you know, our AC's going out.
It is warm in here.
If you want a new AC, send me a smoke. The, the city council, the mayor's office was.
The, uh, the city council, the mayor's, this was.
Mmm.
The question was.
We did have, we did lose our signal earlier. I'm not sure if our signal is up yet or not. Michael, we got a thumbs up. Okay. Looks like we're good.
Call the meeting back. Call the meeting back to order. It is 7:45 PM. We are continuing our regular city council meeting here. We just finished the consent agenda and we are now at item number nine. Item for action. We have one tonight, item 9.1, which is a resolution 2025-16. City manager? If you want a quick overview here, the agreement for off-system construction and maintenance with the Florida Department of Transportation.
So this evening, Mayor, sorry, I was getting a message about our live feed. So this resolution pertains to a project with the Florida Department of Transportation and Tim Carile, our capital improvements director is here to elaborate on that project. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. All right. So as you guys know, in the past, they wanted to do a roundabout down there in front of the gas station, North Atlantic Avenue in that area, and it was shut down because residents and people in this area did not want it. So their next phase of project that they wanted to kick off was the North Atlantic Avenue realignment with International Drive. To do this realignment, though, they would have to buy the parcel that's across the street from North Atlantic Avenue. A parcel, actually a partial, which I'm coming to understand, a partial purchase of that property. And they are going to end up putting International Drive right there across the street. So it's a clean over, whatever you want to call it. But within saying that, they're also going to kind of level off A1A to where it's not like the Daytona International Speedway. I call it the Daytona International Speedway of Cape Canaveral, so that it's not a big hump and it goes over. Within this, though, this is one of, the phase of project that they're going through right now is there's four areas. There's International Drive, there's Jackson Avenue, there's, I believe, Harrison, and there's also Long Point Road where they're going to put some additional stormwater infrastructure. I have reviewed the plans. We had an engineer review the plans. Our attorney reviewed the plans, and we feel like it's not going to have any negative impact on our stormwater system. And if anything, it's going to catch the water before it impacts the closest point, which would be the intersection of Poinsettia and that road on Harrison and Jackson, which I strongly agree with. The one on International Drive is just a matter of putting additional stormwater infrastructure in for the newly, the newly paved road that they want to put in there. Once they're done with all four of these sections, they will pretty much deed it back to the city to maintain. Everything's going to be on FDOT's dime. They're paying for everything, but we will have to maintain it once it's deeded back to the city.
Thank you. City manager, anything else beyond what our capital projects director provided? Okay, great. Counsel, we got a resolution. This is a one reading and I think...
Mayor, just one other, one other point. Tim, we just need to mention that, you know, there's also a perpetual stormwater easement that the city would convey to the Florida Department of Transportation over small segments of the right-of-way intersection with A1A and near the proposed realignment of International Drive. And that's all covered in the documents, but it's just worth noting that, that point, it's also in the title of the resolution. They'll be doing some, some minor improvements over in the stormwater improvements on several intersection sites, on A1A and the presidential streets. And this agreement would require the city to convey a small stormwater easement to FDOT over the portion of right-of-way that FDOT is going to enhance.
If anything, I know you said we don't think it's going to have a negative impact. That's fantastic. I think it should, I mean, adding International Drive across that vacant lot there on the, I guess, north side of the Wells Fargo building, right? Or portion of, it should improve, especially flowing east the 100 block. I know we all think further south still more, but are they increasing the pipe size or anything in that area that would further improve that we know about?
No, the, the main line, we have a main line that runs from A1A out down the old International Drive, and it actually goes through a baffle box system and then out to the, the river. With that being said, they're going to leave the infrastructure that's already there and then tap into it for the new system. I told them I didn't want, I told them I didn't want to get rid of the old system. It works well. It's actually on the international basin, which we have no problems with. They're not going to increase pipe size. I believe they're going to use, if I'm not mistaken, I'd have to look through the plans, down International Drive, I think they're going to either be using a 15 or an 18-inch stormwater pipe with your type C inlets, your normal inlets that we put throughout the city. So, one thing to note, though, is that a lot of people, and I've been asked, well, isn't that going to add to your, the amount of stormwater that's going through that basin? And to be honest, it's the same amount. It's just being caught earlier before getting into the neighborhoods.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, Councilmember Willis?
I would make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-16.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis to approve resolution 2025-16.
I have some questions.
Is there any? Yes, Councilmember Jackson, discussion on the motion.
Okay, so, hello, Mr. Carile.
Hello, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you for all your help with this. I'm wanting to verify, what is a raised urban curb? Because we have those cement blocks that were installed on 192 down in Palm Bay that they're now removing, because it gives people nowhere to go and vehicles are literally crashing into them. So, and, and although this sounds great, and I know we've talked about FDOT, even I was involved as a citizen with the roundabout, I just want to make sure I understand and have clarified.
What, what portion are you talking about?
Okay, so...
So I can get on base with you.
I'm looking within the, within the state's right-of-way. It says reconstructing state road A1A to an urban curb and gutter section.
The first recital, I'm sorry to interrupt, in the whereas, it's of the resolution. Is that right, right here?
Actually, the beginning of the, yeah, the summary, agenda item summary.
Sorry, Councilmember Jackson, thank you.
No, thank you. And so it looks like they're, they said with 10-foot travel lanes, is that going to be the remaining two lanes, north and south, even though we're adding the pedestrian islands? Am I correct?
So you're actually asking about the, the plans, the, the plans that they sent?
Is what you're requesting?
Yes. And I looked at the plans and just trying to make sure that I understand them, because it doesn't, we don't see the lanes marked on each side. So I want to make sure we have two lanes going north and two lanes going south.
On which part? International?
On A1A.
Oh, no, that's going to be, it's going to stay the same. All they're adding to A1A is a median.
Okay, so they're just...
Certain medians in there, yes.
Okay, so the urban curbs that they're talking about in the summary on this agenda item and also within that resolution, I'm, I'm wondering, is that those curves that they make the corners more curved?
Like a type F curb? Like a type F?
Well, I don't know what type.
It's a, trying to explain, it's, it's about a curb this high. Instead of Miami curb, which is kind of transitioned like this, a type F curb keeps people from running off the road unless you hit a big curb.
Okay, so will we have, I guess, a better way for me to ask this. Okay, so we're going to have two lanes, both north and south, and have an island for people that are walking to cross?
No.
No.
No, these are just medians in the middle of the...
These are just medians in the middle of the...
I think later on, they would like to put some mid-block crossings in that might have to do with islands. But for this purpose of what they've given us, it doesn't have any mid-block crossings. They're just strictly islands with turn lanes.
Okay, so it will have islands all the way from the north end of our city down to International Drive?
All the way down to Long Point.
All the way down to Long Point?
Yes.
Okay. And a, a, the median will be 15.5 feet?
It depends on which median you're talking about, because there's multiple medians.
Okay, and I'm looking in the agenda item summary, just so you know. That's why I'm trying to verify this.
Yeah, these are, these are just, this, this resolution is for the International Drive extension, the realignment of International Drive. This does not have anything to do with the actual state road A1A project. That project's not ready to go yet.
Okay, that helps, that helps me, because in the summary, all of this is in there, and I'm trying to figure out how we can have 10-foot travel lanes, have four of those, those, that'd be 40 feet, 15.5 feet, and then nine feet, I think, on each side. So I was trying to make sure I understood that. And I also was concerned about those perpetual curves, or perpetual, the curves that they have down, they're removing them in other parts of Brevard County due to accidents. We don't want any more accidents. Our first responders have enough to do. So that was one thing. Then, we won't end up with any of those, any of the speed bumps like they had in Cocoa Beach that appeared, right?
Yes, nice to hear that.
Okay. Well, the boat almost went into the landscaping thing down there when a guy with a trailer hit it, so wanted to verify that. And I think that's it I had on this. Just, I was wanting to get a clarification, because it did include part of the diagram, the phase of middle for January 2025 is in there, and like that second page shows, shows some of the medians. So I was trying to make sure I understood.
Yeah, I believe that's going to be the next phase, when they actually start doing that part of the road, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
So this is only Long Point?
This is stormwater on Long Point, the entry to Long Point, the entry to Harrison, the entry to Jackson, and along International Drive that they're proposing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then the, the last, the last question I had on this was, when they place, they're keeping a perpetual easement, and they're adding stormwater pipes like you're talking about, and then the stormwater pipes will be owned by the city after install for us to maintain?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I wanted to make sure that was understood as well, because we're adding into the, the cost for maintaining infrastructure.
Right. I can tell you that stormwater infrastructure has lasted quite, like since the 60s. The original infrastructure was placed in the 60s, and we actually just had it lamped by Tetra Tech to get the GIS coordinates and stuff like that. And they, they had told me that our infras, our stormwater infrastructure is actually in really good shape. That's, that's the difference between stormwater and sewer. Sewer will eat away at the, the pipes and stuff, but stormwater can last over 100 years, so.
Oh, that's excellent news. Thank you for sharing that. Yeah. Okay, that's all I had.
I do want to add, though, that the, I'm not sure if I included this, but they do have a timeline for the project. Right now, we're at the negotiation and the local support for updated plans timeline. The next major steps are going to be the final RW order of taking, which is December of 2026, then the demo and clear work, which is 2/23 of 2027.
What was that that was 2023, 2027?
The final RW order of taking, I believe that stands for right-of-way, if I'm not mistaken, does it not? And then the right-of-way demo and clear work, not until 2027, that's February of 2027. And then I'm looking at Monumental Map recorded, when they actually record everything that they've done, not until August of 2028. So you can see this is going to be a very long drawn-out project. It's FDOT.
And so the construction piece of that, what will be the dates for that, Tim?
The actual construction?
Uh huh.
I'm looking at possibly...
February 27.
Yeah, it looks like February...
And it's 18 months to June, or August of 28.
Correct.
And that's recording. They probably finished the construction prior to that, but yeah. Is that, I didn't mean to jump in, but I was doing the same...
That sounds about right.
So February 2027 to what?
August 2028?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, it looks like they're doing the right-of-way demo and clear work in, in February 2027, correct.
Councilmember Willis?
Just to, to clarify some of the things that Councilmember Jackson was asking about. The, the project with the median and a lot of the improvements on A1A was what I reported on last month about being pushed out to 2040 by FDOT. So those, that, that part of that project, because of funding, has been pushed way back. So they are going to be, about 2027, they're going to be coming from 520 and repaving A1A.
Working north from 520?
Working north from 520, and that's when they're going to be putting in the pedestrian hybrid beacon here at, near City Hall. And they'll be paving over a lot of the work that they're doing here.
Wow.
So what was that start date on that, from 528?
Or 520?
520, I'm sorry.
I believe it's going to be December 2026 or January 2027 is when they're going to start.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, that's just what happens when the budget goes from $11 billion down to $4 billion. They push everything back, so.
Way back.
Well, you, you, you also saw what happened with the Bright Line Station, so.
Delayed.
Well, the, the funding went away and they have to, they're reapplying, so.
I'd just like to add one more comment, that I think this is a really good, a really good idea of what FDOT, and I'm glad they're kind of going forward with it, because I don't know if anybody's ever come out of International Drive wanting to take a left on A1A. You got cars that are racing up there heading south. That's a dangerous intersection. So, what's that?
It's the worst right-hand turn or left in the city.
Left turn, yeah.
It is very dangerous.
There will be a entryway to Wells Fargo off International Drive. It will have its own dedicated turn lane. And then to get out, of course, you can always go out on A1A from that, that ingress or egress that's already there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Carile.
You're welcome. Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
I have a question, Tim.
Yeah.
On the, the banking, Daytona Beach bank, what happens to the parking lot in front of the lamppost there? Will, if they flatten that out, will that still be a parking lot for them, or?
Absolutely, yeah. They're not, they're not messing with any of that. As you know, there's a guardrail there for people that are taking the corner. That whole section, I believe, is going to be lowered down with, with the road. So there's going to be a section of it that they're probably going to, you know, lower down all the way from, I'm going to say, and I, I don't mean to speak for FDOT. I wish they would have been able to be here tonight, but under my understanding, it's going to be right around the, just a little bit after the Jackson area, and then over to North Atlantic Avenue. And that's where they want to start trying to pave it down. They're not looking to implement any future, like any additional things over in that area, so they're not taking up anybody's private property or anything like that.
And then the Jackson Avenue, because of the fire department being there, that's not going to be affected by the alignment of International Drive?
That is not. I have, I have kind of keyed in some players with the fire department, though, when they go to put that stormwater pipe in, the FDOT, the city, and the fire department will work to make sure that the, they can get in and out safely.
And the only other thing I saw in here is, in the paperwork, it says Altamont Springs for Tim Carile. Will we move City Hall?
Go ahead.
Altamont Springs, Tim Carile.
It's, uh...
It's a big scribbler's error.
It says FDOT we're talking about.
Page 5 of 13.
Yes, it's 5 of 13 and 6 of 13.
5 of 13 and 6 of 13. I should have printed out my own...
I think if they send you stuff there, you're not going to get it.
I don't think so, yeah. That's, I'm glad we, we communicate on emails. I'll have to tell them to, oh, yeah, I see that. Wow. 225 Newberry Port Avenue, Altamont...
They're supposed to correct that.
Wow, all right.
We pointed that out to them, but they haven't sent a corrected version, apparently.
All right.
The budget cuts got them rattled.
I thought it was moonlighting, so when I saw it.
No, whiteout. They couldn't afford any more whiteout.
Oh, my goodness.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, you are right. I wouldn't get mail there. I'm going to have to call them and say, hey, are you guys getting any of my mail? My goodness.
My comments after hearing this, Councilmember Jackson's concerns about what happens in Matt Page's above ground, the decisions for the stormwater management system, that design is based on that. So there was not anything, I think, that we, Cocoa Beach, Palm Bay examples, and it's, I mean, pushed out so far that...
It may never happen.
Right, so, okay.
Wow.
Don will walk all of you across the A1A at Friday Fest.
No, that was, that was, well, never mind.
That's, Councilmember Davis, is there anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Anything else, counsel? We got a motion and a second on the floor. I think that's in for discussion, if so. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Resolution 2025-16 passes 5-0. Thank you all for helping. We are now on to public hearings. Tonight, we have two public hearings, both on, well, the first one is quasi-judicial public hearing, resolution 2025-17, lot split, lot split for 9009 and 9119, Astronaut Boulevard. The petitioners, Portview Inn and Suites LLC. The motion to consider the adoption of this resolution as follows. Mr. City Attorney, do you need to read this one, the resolution?
I can breathe it in, unless I blow it up. This is a quasi-judicial matter. It's resolution number 2025-17, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, providing for the division of approximately 7.19 acres of land owned by Portview Inn and Suites LLC and located at 9009 and 9119, Astronaut Boulevard, Cape Canaveral, Florida. The existing tax parcel ID is at 24-37-15-00-252 and 24-37-15-00-267 into two lots of record for development purposes, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions, severability, and an effective date. So this is, I don't know if you were going to do a presentation on this, or do you...
Just make a clarifying note that this was never rejected as a lot split. It just has, yes, to be processed to match what is on record with the county.
We've been here before.
The one, the one, the one difference on this one is that they went to the county and actually got tax parcels. They did not convey the land. The land is still owned by the same owner, 7.19 acres. But they did go to the, the county, requested two tax parcels after the hotel was, the second hotel, the Hyatt Place, was constructed. And at that point, I think they approached the city, I believe, and submitted a lot split application. The city planner, the city engineer, myself, we reviewed the application under our respective disciplines. Lot went into reviewing this application because they're proposing the two lots, and there's two separate hotels, one built on each lot. And in reviewing the plans, you'll see that there's a covenant that's going to be required, because there's a shared stormwater facility, there's a shared access point and shared utilities. So pursuant to the city's codes and... utilities, so pursuant to, uh, the city's codes and regulations, um, appropriate assurances had to be given to the city that, um, those shared, uh, facilities would remain shared if they, someday they convey, um, one of the lots and it's under separate ownership. So, you know, based on the staff's review, um, staff, uh, is recommending approval. I believe there's somebody here representing the applicant too, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And at the appropriate time, you can give him an opportunity to speak.
So that's the resolution, counsel. At this time, before we go to public hearing, are there any technical questions on what we heard from our community economic development director and city attorney?
I, I would like to just clarify, I watched the, um, planning and zoning meeting, and, uh, Connor was here, and he was talking about the original lot split was not approved by the city, and then later in the meeting, he said it was never reviewed, it never came to a board. So was it denied, or did it never come to a board?
And it went to the county first, and then, uh, so now this is, uh, in compliance as opposed to going to the city?
He may have misspoken if he said lots split in the context of what they did with the county. They went to the county and they had, um, call them cutouts, um, created for, uh, two, um, uh, geographically defined lots, and they requested a tax parcel ID.
Okay.
So they, they received an additional tax parcel ID, um, in addition to the one that they had for the, so now they have two tax parcels, they do not have two, um, development lots from, from the city's subdivision perspective, so, um, so Connor, I think, was alluding to the fact that they, they went to the county first to get tax parcels, you know, and then they came to the city after that to seek approval for subdivision of land. I would, you know, fr- frankly, they should have done it, I would have done it the other way around, but.
Yeah, that happens.
Nonetheless, um, they were told when they submitted the application that there's no guarantee, um, that the two tax parcels would be, um, meet all of the city's requirements for developable lots, that all had to be reviewed by the city engineer, the city planner, and fortunately for them, um, the tax parcel geographical boundaries that they went to the county to get the tax parcel IDs for, um, did not create any issues, um, in the opinion of the city engineer, city planner, um, so the lots are in, in, in compliance with the city's codes.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time before we go to public hearing?
Well, all, all I was going to ask, and, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum basically asked that, and Anthony answered the question, but, uh, you know, my only concern was if there was not a hotel sitting there, and they hadn't gone to the county first, would we approve the, the split? Would, and Anthony said that there was no issue with the planner, so, um.
Correct, it was found in compliance with all of our requirements, and, uh, and approved, uh, by the P and Z, uh, Planning and Zoning Board on October 8th.
And?
Okay, so P and Z.
They approved.
Being a land use.
They recommended, they recommended approval.
Yeah, and so that was the meeting you were referring, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't understand.
That statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
Um, I have a question about, let's see, and, let's see, chapter 98, section 98-66 of the city code, four, um, and this is on page six of eight of the agenda item.
Okay.
In regards to the, uh, driveways, and, uh, the finding was that there was no driveways being eliminated and no new points of conflict created, safe ingress, ingress and egress, um, and there's a map, um, City Clerk, if you would pull the map of the property up as it is right now, I think with the two sections on it.
I'm a little slow on where you're, you said page?
Six of eight. Of the agenda item, agenda summary.
Okay, I was a little too far, I was on another page eight, and that, okay, two, six of eight, I'm, I'm following, I did eight of eight for some reason, okay.
And then, if you look at the plot map.
Uh huh.
It works for the, this particular company because it's two different hotels owned by the same company. If you look at the sketch to accompany description.
Mm-hmm.
On exhibit one.
Mm-hmm.
We have that right side of the parcel, the plot for, uh, what has the Hyatt on it, that right side would go back to the Country Inn and Suites. Is it part of the lot for the Country Inn and Suites? And the reason I'm asking this is our code speaks to having a street for access, and if one or the other hotel is sold, then that, let's say Country Inn and Suites is sold, or that the front hotel, the Hyatt is sold, um, you know, are we gonna have any access issues in the future if one of those properties is not owned by the same, you know, if both properties aren't owned by the same company? But cu- and so I wanted to, to see who, who would own that, that, that's essentially like a street, but it's really a driveway.
A flag lot.
Mm-hmm. On the, on the south side of the lot, um, for the subject parcel 1, 2.5 acres, is that part of, um, Country Inn and Suites lot, the way it looks on this?
I ju- I think right now would, thank you so much, you absolutely have a chance to do that, I think, if it was your question?
Yeah, my question is.
Is there gonna be access issues?
Yeah, and the reason being is that our code literally, uh, speaks of on that page six of eight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the summary, it refers twice to our, uh, code stating that we need, um, it has to have, the land shall be such as to provide by means of a public s- street, each lot with access to the existing public street, so, wanna, you know, I'm wanting to make sure that.
Can I address that issue, please?
Yes, please.
Let me cut to the chase on that. So you'll see in the package, it's a, it's a, it's a rather lengthy exhibit, and, and it's called a declaration of reciprocal easement. So you are correct that the ingress and egress along the southern boundary is gonna remain the, in the ownership of the, um, of the Country Inn and Suite, hotel. However, under the declaration of reciprocal easement, there will be a perpetual ingress and egress that requires that both the, the Hyatt Place and the Country Inn have that shared access, which technically is access to A1A, street access to A1A. So that, that's a shared access point, same thing with the drainage, they have a shared drainage arrangement as well as some, um, some shared utility arrangement, and they also have, um, um, will have shared access throughout the site, so the cars can traverse, um, across, Country Inn, uh, cars would be able to traverse across, uh, the Hyatt Place property through shared access. So that was a big condition of this in order to ensure code compliance with, with street access, among other things, um, and they have agreed, uh, to this perpet- this, this, um, declaration of reciprocal easements. Also, they're agreeing that it affords the city's right to be able to, um, you know, enforce, um, this perpetual nature of these shared, shared facilities to ensure that, um, you know, the property's remaining, remaining in compliance as, as intended if this, um, lot split is approved.
And, thank you, city attorney, and if one or the other were sold, will that continue?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make.
It's perpetual forever, if they want to make any amendments, they have to come to the city of Cape Canaveral for review to determine whether or not they do any damage to what we have required as conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, great question. Any other at this time? Mr. Cox, thank you. I think we are ready to hear from the public. Mr. Cox had provided a card, but if anyone would like to speak on this matter, uh, when he's finished, more than welcome.
Do you need someone to speak? I only have a few questions, and. The attorney did an excellent job so far, but I am available if there are further clarifications or questions anyone might have. I am intimately familiar with the document he was referring to.
And Mr. Cox, it would be helpful for the record, your role with this property?
Yes, I'm, I'm, uh, part of the ownership group of the property.
Yeah, and full name, please, Mr. Cox, for the record. Full name, please, for the record.
Dale Cox, C O X.
And I got his card here as well. You, counsel, any questions for Mr. Cox? Thank you again. Any other public comments on this hearing item? This is a one reading, city attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
One reading, um, if approved, you know, it'll go, and, um, the ownership group was gonna sign a joiner to the resolution, as well as they have a lender, the lender will also sign a joiner, agreeing to all the terms and conditions that the city council, um, would approve in the resolution.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close public participation. Counsel? There's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-17.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis to approve resolution 2025-17. This time, we've heard, uh, answer questions, and given the opportunity for public participation. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Resolution 2029, 2025-17, pass 5-0 on first and final reading, thank you. We are now on to, and thank you again for your help, on to item number 9.3, this is our last public hearing item, which is ordinance 07-2025, city attorney?
This is first reading of a proposed ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, mending chapter 110 zoning, article 8, residential plan unit developments of the city code to update and clarify procedures and standards, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. This, uh, draft ordinance was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board and, uh, recommended for approval. Just to kind of start things off, because I think Tamsen would like to say a few things too, um, the, uh, there's been, um, a property owner that's expressed some interest in doing a, a, a PUD residential project. The city currently, interestingly, has two, uh, PUD processes, um, one for mixed-use commercial projects, and then has a residential PUD process, so, um, this ordinance only addresses the residential PUD process. City's comprehensive plan, uh, requires, um, or, or encourages the city to have, um, a planned, uh, unit development process, um, that's intended to, um, provide some flexibility regarding, um, various land use, land use patents, developments, et cetera. Um, all of those comprehensive plan policies, um, are set forth in the recitals of the ordinance, so this, this ordinance is consistent with those, uh, policies, um, and the RP, the issue, interesting issue with the RPUD process, as far as I can tell, this residential plan unit development process has been on the books since the 80s, and it has not been used once, and, in, um, since it, since it was adopted by the city council, and, and frankly, uh, my view of it is, it hasn't been used at all, is because while PUD processes are supposed to be flexible, the city's current RPUD process is anything but flexible. So, um, you know, developers usually tend to come to the city and, and deal with traditional, um, the traditional zoning district regulations that the city has on the books. So the purpose of these revisions is try to, um, in- inject that flexibility into the residential plan unit development process, and fundamentally, what you need to clearly understand is that an RPUD is a zoning designation, just like a C1 zoning designation or a C2 zoning designation, an RPUD, um, is a zoning designation. So in order for any project to be, to utilize this RPUD process, they have to go through a zoning process, and, and it's, and it's a different kind of zoning process in that to get through the process, they have to have a development plan that is, travels in tandem with the RPUD zoning designation, and at the end of the day, if the council decides to, to grant the rezoning, the development plan and all the terms and conditions that may be warranted by the city council get incorporated as if it's its own zoning designation. Okay, it's its own unique zoning designation that has its own plan, has its own terms and conditions, um, so it, that's the way it's supposed to be set up, and, and developers are supposed to have the application flexibility to do things that sometimes are out of the box, but rest assured, nothing gets approved unless the city council, at the end of the day, approves an RPUD zoning designation for the specific development project that's being proposed.
That's not what we're doing right now, though, right?
What you're doing right now is just trying to change the rules, um, to provide the flexibility to perhaps entertain one of those projects. And I just wanted to make that point.
It's helpful. And I know we used outdated, but it's really just, did we have 10 acres then in the city when it was, you know, it's hard to find in Cape Canaveral, 10, one parcel contiguous. So that's the ordinance, we're gonna have two readings of this.
Two readings.
Tamsen?
Yeah, so currently, there are no developable 10 acre, developable 10-acre properties in the city, so the current ordinance, uh, is not useful as written. Um, and we have one PUD, uh, designated in the city, and then zero RPUDs, so if it were to happen, it would be shown on the zoning map as Anthony has outlined, and then this reduces the minimum acreage from, uh, 10 acres to four, which would be, which would be, uh, uh, commensurate with reality of what our city looks like, so, um, so this, uh, also is intended to provide meaningful access to, or coastal shared access to residents, and, um, have, uh, more power over flexibility of these developments, and, um, provide a stream, streamlined, uh, option if we did want to deem the plan favorable, excuse me.
How many acres, I'm sorry, I just jumped in there.
Oh, no, please, uh, if that's it, I think now's the time for some questions, and it is a public hearing item, so after we're done with that, we'll, here, Councilmember
So, how many acres do we have developable right now?
Well, we're, uh, total, like, of the, are you, do you mean vacant land parcels?
Yeah, vacant land parcels.
I can look that up for you, I apologize, I don't have a hand.
Well, we know we're 90% built out.
Correct.
Okay, and we, and how many of those, that vacant land, if you know, Tamsen, how, how mu- do you, do we know how many acres are?
Are each one?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I can pull that up, we have a, we have a listed, um, that we do track, but, uh, but offhand, I don't know the total.
And the reason I'm asking is so that I can ask the city attorney this question. Rather than approving new zoning, which is what this essentially is doing, am I correct, city attorney? This isn't, would be a new zone added if I'm understood what you said correctly?
It currently exists today, but there has been no designation of any property RPUD.
Okay.
So it exists today, that, um, I, I just indicated that to get an RPUD, it's a zoning district.
Okay. So it exists although no one's used it?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So we, so.
We're trying to change the procedures and standards to make it a possibility.
And I understand. I just don't see, since this hasn't been used, I don't see why we would do this versus just giving a variance on site approval.
No, I would, no, that's not, you have, variance is a fundamentally different concept. A variance for like side setbacks or any setbacks requires an undue and unnecessary hardship. Okay? This is about, you could get, you could get deviations from existing code, but those deviations are not coming at you from a hardship standpoint, but more of a creativity standpoint. You're giving developers, architects, the engineers flexibility to make deviations from the code as part of the holistic approval of a plan.
Understood.
So it's a little bit different?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the variance process is very, very stringent.
Well, and my, I still don't, I don't see, we have a minimum amount of acreage left to develop. How creative do we want a developer to be on their own? I'm just seriously asking, counsel, this. Because we have minimum amounts of that land, but some of them are lumped together. So how creative do we want to allow, you know, it to be for a developer? And I think that's something counsel really has to think about because of the fact that we have a lot of the lots together down along Ridgewood. We have multiple lots that have streets cutting them off, but that's all available acreage. We have different spots that, so it makes it hard for me to understand. Do we just open this up since it's never been used?
Well, what it allows for is a lot more creativity as far as being, aligning more with best practices and resiliency and sustainability, protecting common spaces and, and access, public access. And so we, and pedestrian connectivity as well. So I, when we say creativity, I think it means being allowable for more sustainable design plans that we're hoping to encourage in the, in the community.
Yeah, so it's reducing, it has not been even a possibility. I mean, maybe the large bill, so, because of one example in the summer, the 10-acre minimum, the rigid lot sizes and those things.
Correct.
So if it's lowered to four acres, that opens up, I mean, it's easy, the two vacant lots on Central and North Atlantic, the one on the other side of A1A, those are two big lots, probably combined, double digits. I don't know, 12, I'm guessing, one at eight acres. But 15 acres, both of those fell under the 10.
Yeah.
And those are vacant, like you question. Some few more. There can't be that many more vacant four-acre parcels.
And see, a lot of this falls into terms that I'm seeing in this thing. Okay? So, for example, we, we're going to allow the preliminary application and the final application to be combined. Is that correct, from what I'm understanding, city attorney?
It would be, it would be an option.
Okay.
But.
And then we're removing, like on page 10 of 27, preliminary development plan application, where that could be meshed together as an option, right? Nothing, are we, we're adding, "Nothing herein shall preclude the developer from bypassing at its own expense and risk the preliminary development plan faced proceeding directly to the final." And then ensure that final and the preliminary requirements are met simultaneously. And just what keeps popping in my mind is Fillmore, because we had them turn in the site plan. They kicked it back and said, "We need to make changes to it." They turned it back in again, and the changes weren't made. So how will we ensure on doing that kind of thing, city attorney, that we're able to, you know, ensure that the, the plans are correct if we don't have that two-step process?
Okay. So it, a little bit is, it's a little bit different. In order to get the zone, the RPUD zoning designation, you're correct, there's a, there's a preliminary development plan followed by a final development plan. The ordinance does, as you indicate, allow an option of consolidating the two, but you have to comply with both requirements, preliminary and final. The preliminary is intended for, and there's a lot of risk if a developer were to try to consolidate a preliminary development plan and final development plan together in an RPUD context. But the way it's supposed to happen is the developer would come in, seek an RPUD zoning, and the first, first thing that would have to, they'd have to do is have their, their meeting with the staff. And then they would have to present the preliminary development plan through the process. It's more of a less like a, a little bit more detailed than a, than a basic concept plan, but it, it kind of sets the table for the developer to proceed to the more detailed final engineering of a, of a final development plan. So it, there is a two-step process, but if they consolidate it, the developer's got to take the risk of doing everything required under the final development plan all at once for an up and down vote of the city council, because the city council is the only one that can approve an RPUD. So there's a definition of a final development plan. Final development plan would include, as required for the specific development project, a subdivision, a preliminary subdivision application, if applicable, the complete site plan for the development project, any requests for deviations, all within an engineered set of plans and, and for consideration, without even testing the waters with a preliminary plan. So that's what I mean by it's more challenging and risky for a developer to go to full engineering and say, "I want to, I want to have preliminary and final at the same time." There's an enormous amount of expenses in engineering and architects to actually put that together. And then the council would, 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 would process it all at once.
Have we had someone that wanted to do it that way?
Hmm, I don't, no.
Or we just given them the option?
I think it's just given them the option. But, but I would, I would say in most cases it's going to be, it would be preliminary first for the reasons I just expressed, how risky and costly it is to get to the final development plan stage. And the ordinance doesn't get, get, get adopted until you have all of those applications in front of you. That's the other aspect of, of the RPUD process, the way it's, the amendments are. The council is considering the whole application process holistically together before it approves or denies the zoning designation. The zoning designation is like a cover of a book, right?
Right.
The contents of the book would be the subdivision, the site plan, the deviations, the development agreement.
So are we approving these terms that we're seeing in this or just the, the zoning, the RPUD zoning?
Just the process.
So this process, including all of these details?
Yeah, the way I understand, anything that's in the 27-page ordinance, anything that's stricken is being removed, anything added?
And that's what I saw and highlighted.
All of that.
Because we've got accepting a letter of credit for a maintenance warranty bond. We've taken out.
Yeah. Can I, I should have mentioned that, too. You'll see some, and I think, thought we referenced it in the agenda package, but there are a lot of strikeouts on some detail because they're absolutely redundant. The definition of final development plan includes all of those other applications that I talked about, the preliminary subdivision, if applicable, definitely the site plan. Those code sections have, those require all those things, the letter of credit, right, and, and those things. So rather than have the redundancy, you would just rely on those code sections, trying to streamline it.
Okay. So like that saying, in lieu of any bond, they can use an escrow account or a letter of credit, and we already allow that, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the other one, I had a question, is termination zone on B, city attorney?
Can you give me a page and a line number?
Yeah, 8-27, line item 39 and 40.
What page?
8-27 of the.
Is it this, 8 of 27?
Oh, 8 of 27?
Forty, 39 and 40.
Okay.
So on that, if the failure of the developer to submit a final development plan for the entire development, then we're striking out that the site would revert to previous zoning classification. So even though that developer, let's say, you know, I didn't get it, the property developed for whatever reason, we're going to leave that designation on that property even though it's not developed now, instead of reverting it to the previous zoning?
It would have to go through the rezoning process.
Okay. That was, it would have to go through.
Well, the, oh, okay.
See, and it wasn't before because we're striking it out, but under the new way, it would have to. So the new developer, let's say they don't want to do an RPUD, thank you, and they just wanted to do typical residential lots, then they'd have to go back and have it rezoned.
Let me, can I clarify?
Sure.
Let me, let me clarify. So if the developer fails to submit the final development plan for the entire development within the time period, and that's laid out in the other section. So if they come in and they get the preliminary, I mean, the preliminary development plan, they have a certain time period to come in and get the final development plan, which would be the actual RPUD zoning designation. If they don't do it within the time period, then the preliminary development plan is automatically deemed revoked. So there, at that point, there has not been any change in zoning designation. So there's no need to revert back. So I misspoke.
Okay. So this is cleanup of language of the existing code?
Yeah.
See, and I'm going to tell you, I think it would help me as a council member to know what is a change and what is cleanup of code. We've gone through this before with other code, but for me, it'd be very helpful because that way I know we're not changing something and have to look at each thing and determine, "Why are we doing this?" Like, like I'm doing right now, driving everyone insane, I'm sure, or at least the city attorney.
Yeah. I mean, these are great questions. And if this moves on, I'd be happy to walk through the whole ordinance with you, if you would like. There is some significant cleanup in this because frankly, the 1980 version of the RPUD process, in my opinion, doesn't even comply with modern times. It's inflexible. There were things that, there's things in here that just don't make any sense. That's one of them that you pointed out. Because a preliminary development plan in a PUD process is not a, is not a, it's not a zoning change. It's not a zoning, should not be a zoning change until the actual RPUD designation gets approved by council as a zoning district. And the ordinance was even, it was just, it doesn't really clearly come out and even say that, what it should have been intended to, to do. It didn't, it doesn't do, at least in modern times.
Okay. And so, city attorney, I know you went through every one of these, all of this, right? Or did you?
Did I?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, actually, in a lot of detail.
Well, no, I just wanted to make sure it was one of those things you would verify, or the legalese on.
I spent a lot of time drafting it, too.
Okay, you wrote this. All right. That's, that's a clarity that is good to know as well. Thank you. Okay. So it's mostly cleaning up the code.
With Connor and Tamsin, but yeah, I spent a lot of time.
It puts more power and control back to the council. You'll have to see every part of the plan as it comes forward. So you're more engaged in the process. So that, if that helps clarify.
That does. Thank you.
That's a good point.
And that's.
Several meetings ago, you wanted to streamline?
Yes.
All right. And there's other aspects, other things that are going to be done to streamline just the run-of-the-mill, traditional way the city conducts development permit business. But in terms of RPUD process?
Mm-hmm.
This is streamlining it because everything has to be packaged up and presented to the city council for the zoning change.
Okay. And that's good.
Can't get any more streamlined than that. Goes to the planning, goes to the staff, goes to the planning and zoning board, and then everything comes to you for approval. So.
Okay. And that, thank you for that clarification because I wasn't sure what was going on with this. And so that's very good to know because I am interested in making sure that we are streamlining this process. So, and I'm glad to know that it's cleaning up, you know, our old information. Okay. All right. I halt now.
All good questions. I think I'm just going to chime in on one of the, so, like, I see some improvements that, you know, on 11 of 27, line 14, adding in landscaping and tree removal as a part of the exhibits that are required. You know, you'd think that we'd have that, but that's, that's important. But on the next page, 12 of 27, I, what is the, this is one that maybe the council was involved. I see a ship, we've got building official going to community development director. So on page 12, 27, line 10, 12 of 27, line 10, application review. Now, this is preliminary, but it says preliminary development plan shall be reviewed formally by the, it used to say, building official and city council. And now it's to the community development director. And I saw that in a couple of other places, and it struck the city council. Was there, I guess, that's one example where the city is not involved, but maybe there's some good reasons for it?
Yeah. Now, the, the council is involved. It kind of cleans up the application review process. So the preliminary development plan is first reviewed by the community development department to determine feasibility and suitability of the plan prior to submission to the planning and zoning board. And then the planning and zoning board shall then review the preliminary development plan to determine conformity with official plans and policies of the city and the requirements of this section. And then upon completion of its review, the planning and zoning board shall recommend to the city council the approval, approval, subjecting conditions, or disapproval of the preliminary development plan. So it just removed, I think, a misplaced statement and city council.
It's in the wrong spot of the process.
It's in the wrong spot. Yeah. But it's, but.
And I said director, but it's the department represented largely by the director.
Yeah, they have their review group that takes a look at it. You know, the community development department would have the planner, the building official, the fire marshal, right? Everybody's, everybody's kind of involved getting their eyes on it. So the first step would be to determine whether this is even feasible and suitable. And then it goes to the planning and zoning board, then it comes to the council.
So this is one of two readings. Obviously, I mean, excellent questions, but if we... So this is one of two readings. Obviously, I mean, excellent questions, but if we, if this passes, it means that the opportunity presents itself, and then we're going to go through, if we exercise this, right, that we're now learning the procedures, that if a project comes, it's going to go in tandem, we're going to be able to see, or be involved in the process, and then we would formally go through two more readings and probably a lot more other meetings to actually change that zoning like we did the one time on the, they wanted to develop the out parcel for the storage units, I think, right? That was the only other R, but that wasn't, I want to say RPUD, that was CPUD, and then the commercial, the planned use development. So, okay.
So, I mean, yeah, you're right. I mean, if they went through the preliminary, then go through the final development and all that, I mean, the council would see it, at the preliminary, would see it two more times as part of the rezoning itself. I mean, you'd see it, you see a project like this multiple times, to have multiple opportunities to make comments. One other point to be made, too, is another aspect of this, while the eight, minimum acreage was reduced from 10 to four, there's also another requirement that says that there needs to be a minimum of 15 dwelling units, all right, in order to be eligible. So it adds a little bit more texture to that acreage requirement, and, you know, frankly, you know, how many 15 dwelling unit, you know, single, like, single-family projects has the city had, you know, in the last couple of decades? Not too many, right? But, so, I mean, that's another, another layer to the ordinance that doesn't even exist under the existing. And it's all about providing some additional housing opportunities.
Yeah, and I know that we've added on the Cape View Elementary, and that's what my head is thinking, is residential housing is extremely important, but I want to make sure, are there any more questions before we hear from the public on this one, if anyone chooses to speak? Mayor Protim Kellum?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Moving it from 10 acres to four, where did four come from? Because if you look at the lots in the city, the vacant lots, a lot of them are less than four. I mean, why is it four and not six or three, or where did four come from?
Four came from some preliminary, frankly, some preliminary inquiries about a possible project. And it's more than four acres, but, I mean, four seemed to be, looking around at vacant land and opportunities in the city seemed to be more of a realistic number, certainly more realistic than 10. So.
I totally agree with streamlining the process and making it better for developers and more creative for developers. I just think that, you know, I looked at a bunch of vacant land in our city, and the only place I could find that was more than 10 acres was the old Johnson Controls place. That's 10.86, right next to the church.
The IAP, those are, okay.
But
That's 10?
That's 10.86. But everything else that you, I looked at, and you talk about access to the river, and the things that scare me about that is, you know, we have mobile home parks along the river, and if we change it to four, like Cocoa Palms is 6.75, are we going to have developers go in there and get rid of the mobile homes and put a development up? Because, first of all, it's a lot of our senior citizens. It's the only real affordable housing left in our city for people. A lot of people come down for the winters in these places. And I just think that, you know, as a council, we need to think about how this is going to affect the future, you know, like, and how, you know, we talk about hotels and things that are going on down there. You know, the council that decided in the EOD district that you didn't need a minimum of acreage, could they see what has happened down there now? You know, I just, and the other question I have is, it does this, I mean, is it, so it would come to the council each project, because my, also my fear is 150 units per acreage, are we going to have 150 short-term rentals? And again, you know, we're losing our school because we can't, we don't have families' homes here. That's a concern of mine. Also, on, you know, we're talking about one project, but also in this zone, you could have single-family detached dwellings, Anthony, and what, multi-family residential dwellings, including apartments. Would that also, I mean, I'm looking at Section 110, 403, page 6 of 27.
Page 6 of 27?
Yeah, the top of the page.
Okay.
Permitted uses? Yeah, we're not proposing any changes to that section, but you're correct, because it's an RPUD process, a residential PUD process. So you have single-family detached dwelling units and multifamily residential, which are all residential projects.
And what, I mean, so again, it would be a project-by-project authorization by the city council. So somebody couldn't come in and say, I want 150 units of short-term rentals. It would have to be, go through the
The density, maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre is in the comprehensive plan, and that's not changing. So you have that, that density cap in the comprehensive plan. So that's going to put some guardrails on the scope and size of any residential project, because you can't exceed 15 dwelling units per acre.
There'd be 60 units on a four-acre parcel theoretically, assuming with all the other rights.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, yeah.
You can't exceed that.
Yeah, you, they would not be able to exceed it. But, you know, I mean, you've got to do all the infrastructure and residential amenities and driveways and all that stuff, so that knocks down the density. Gross acreage tends not to be the best indicator of the maximum, maximum density when you start doing stormwater and all that other stuff, too. It gets knocked down, but you're right, 60 would be the max. The minimum would be, and an RPUD would be 15 dwelling units, a minimum of 3.75 dwelling units per acre, because there needs to be at least some substance to the residential project to even be considered, right? Because it's all, it's all about providing housing. With respect to vacation rentals, frankly, every, every residential unit that's approved in the city today could become a vacation rental. There's nothing that the city can do to prohibit vacation rentals. It's just the fact of life because of the way the legislature, the legislature preempted municipal home rule authority. The other aspect of this is, you know, if it's going to be single-family, there's, I think, I think it's in here, too, that there's opportunities to have private deed restrictions, right, running in tandem with the, with the project that may impose some limitations on vacation rentals, but that would be up to the property owner, right?
Like an HOA.
Like an HOA, right, in the declarations and covenants, like some of our condominiums have, you know, provisions that have, you know, minimum rental periods, which private, private property owners can impose. You know, they can't, the municipality can't impose it, but a private property owner can, can place all sorts of limitations on vacation rentals.
Are
One more question. So if a property, just an example, the Hitching Post, used to be the Hitching Post, I don't know what it is now, but they have 6.96 acres there. So they would be able to develop four acres of that 6.9? Would that be, or also?
No, it wouldn't, like, it would have to have a minimum of four acres to be eligible to apply.
Okay.
So 6.9 would certainly be 2.9 acres more than the minimum. So they, you know, that property would, if it was all together, be eligible. Also, you know, if you have smaller vacant parcels that are less than four, and they can be aggregated, right, to meet the minimum four, then they would be eligible to apply for RPUD. You know, RPUD is not for everyone, okay? A lot of developers will just rely on, you know, traditional zoning. RPUD is, you know, it's a challenging process, because it provides more discretionary flexibility in the approving governing body than traditional zoning. Traditional zoning is, if you come in and you apply and you meet the requirements, then there's nothing really too much the city can say, right? You meet the minimum requirements. In RPUD, you have to design to a standard that the city council finds acceptable before an RPUD zoning would be approved.
Unless they're in an economic opportunity overlay district location, correct?
We're going to talk about that one.
Yes, we are.
Let's not make apples and oranges.
I know, we almost, I was like, public hearing is needed.
Really good questions, and I think the Hitching Post and the, today, they're not a possibility. I think it's, you know, to think about the impact that if this opportunity is now there. I think it would be helpful between now and the second reading is to get an idea and think, how many four-acre just properties, not even if they're developed, your question, Councilmember Jackson, and really a redevelopment question of Mayor Protim Kellum, is, you know, you're existing, that this would, I guess, properties would qualify for, and not getting into aggregating and merging, that opens up a whole nother, you know, if you buy two properties, but
Well, to me, I'm just, you know, like Mango Manor, you know, it's 6.51 acres. I just hate to see developers come in, buy the land, and remove all the, you know, mobile homes or whatever, because again, it's affordable housing for our senior citizens. I just, I'm just thinking way down the line.
No, it's good thinking, that's their job.
Well, Mayor Protim, I do appreciate that, and we appreciate the level of stewardship, and that's one of the reasons that we wanted to change this process, so council would have that ability to offer that stewardship and protection for those parcels, because that, a potential developer would have to win you over in order to, to, they couldn't, we're taking, I mean, effectively, we are putting the power in council to be those stewards in that barrier of approval. So that's how this ordinance would impact these parcels. We can certainly pull together a list of properties that way, but the goal of this is to make sure that level of oversight and stewardship does come back to the city. So, and we and staff is supportive of that, of that.
Can we get a breakdown of how many, when you look at those numbers of parcels, how many are in the economic overlay, opportunity overlay district?
Yeah, I have like the maps in my mind, so I'm looking off, like, a lot of them, yes, I can look.
It's easier to say what's not along A1.
Exactly. Okay, so how many four-acre parcels and how many are in the economic overlay district? Excellent, I'll pull that together for you guys before the next reading.
And do you want the four-acre parcels that have a future land use map designation of residential? Because in order to have an RPUD
Yes.
zoning, you have to have an underlying future land use designation of residential.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think those would be the
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, the possibilities without going through land use changes and
Because you can't predict land use changes, so.
Okay, those are all great questions. Councilmember Willis, Councilmember Davis?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. So public hearing item, we've worked through some questions. It is a lengthier ordinance change. This is one of two readings. If anyone chooses to speak on this item, please come forward, open it to the public. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close. I am so sorry. You take your time, thank you. That's okay.
Shannon Roberts, and the question is, does this deal with height? As you know, height has also been a concern by the residents, and I was just wondering if there's any provision that we might introduce that deals with height.
Good question.
It used to be 45 feet by referendum by the residents, and then we made an exception for air conditioners, and then it's gone on and on and on, to where I think, I've forgotten how the, what the latest is, but it's in the 70s, as I recall. So I just wanted to bring that up as a consideration for the council, if you all want to make a difference in the height for the city and the skyscape.
I didn't see anything on height. I think our city attorney is, might look into that or see if, now that we're working through it.
That's a good question, because I don't remember really focusing in on that issue at all, in these changes, but
But if it's in the economic overlay district, height, you know, that's obviously the
We're going to talk about
While he's working on that excellent question, is there Well, today, the properties, we learned it has to be land use residential. We know that 45 feet, right, would be the R3 zone, that's the highest, 25 feet for R1 and R2. So
Well, we made, we've made many exceptions, as we know, for the commercial development and so forth, and the intent from the referendum, as I understand, it was to, for all residential commercial, to be limited to 45 feet. And then we made an exception for the air conditioning, because that was the argument by the developers, they couldn't put sufficient air conditioning with a new air conditioning capability, you know, that was higher. So they asked for and got permission to do up to 60. And then since then, we've just been, as we know, making special exceptions. I'm not even sure we've addressed it, to be honest. And we just let the hotels do what they want. It's my perception, again, it's his perception.
No, understood, and
Thank you.
Obviously made that as a part of comments. City Attorney, that question?
I'm still researching it.
Okay.
It's a great, it's a great point.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
I'm not sure I'll get a quick answer to it, though. Try and.
Okay, any other public participation? Seeing none, we'll go, bless you. We'll go ahead and close the public participation. Council, I think if we're ready to make a motion, we can still discuss further, but I think that, on this first reading.
I think the height issue
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now, and I think that's something that we need to address before second reading.
I have that on the list. City Attorney, would, would that fall under building code or any restrictions already?
It'll, it'll, it'll fall under the RPUD ordinance that gets approved for the project. I think we might need to have a little bit more clarity on that in the, in the proposed ordinance at first blush. I think that was a good point to raise.
The land use has to be residential, that's big. Some of these, like the property, the old Johnson Controls, that land use Some of these, like the property, the old Johnson Controls, that land use is commercial. I put you on the spot, but I think that would.
I think so, yeah.
It'd be mixed, that's true, right. That's not, they'd have to go through a whole nother. I think in the, the four-acre sites, that filters it.
Well, and Johnson Controls, wouldn't that be eligible for mixed use, so?
But not through this path.
But not through this path, because this is fully residential. And I think it's already zoned C1 anyway, all the way to the river.
Yeah, it's one big parcel. Okay.
So, do we make a motion?
I'm comfortable knowing that we're gonna have a second reading moving forward. And I think we got a chance to ask some questions tonight around working backwards from height to, you know, understanding how many properties this impacts, how it's gonna change procedures, the council's involvement in the process. And, you know, as an example of taking one, that process looks to be like a complex and difficult path that really the council could, I mean, we've done this a couple times in the commercial, that the way village property was a very different form of this, right? That was a creative project that he could have went in and built a hotel, I think. And he did what he, or he's proposed there. Councilmember Willis?
Just a question for Anthony on page 24 of 27, line one. Can we not just add a number?
Oh, that's where the height is mentioned.
Yes, that's, that's the sentence that I've honed in on. We could add a number there. I was just looking up the R3 zoning designation. The maximum height in the R3's residential zoning designation is 45 feet, as an example.
So if you were applying for an RPUD in an R3 area zone, then you could go to 45 feet?
In an R3 zoning district right now, today, you can, you can go as high as 45. And I think it's the, R2 might be the same.
But if that residential, is there R3 in the economic overlay district? I think that layer of. That's the issue that Dr. Roberts has always raised, is you have 45 feet, R3, but when you, in that economic overlay district.
Well, and that's why I'm gonna have a hard time even voting on this until we talk to, on the next agenda item. Because of how all of this is overlapping.
2012, I think that went in.
Yeah, that's been in a while.
Yep.
So I think for purposes of this ordinance, we'll just need to insert a, you know, the maximum height of some number, you know. R3 is, would allow multifamily, it's maximum 45. If it's in the EEOD, you are correct that, I think the maximum height would be 45 unless there's a higher height approved. And in the works is the other ordinance streamlining the processes to return the approval authority to go above 45 feet to the city council.
But the EEOD allows up to 65 feet.
I'm safer here, yeah.
And all the property that I was talking about along the river is in the E.
The A1A, yeah, the A1A frontage is. I'm not sure if the property actually adjacent and abutting the river is in EEOD. I don't have the map. I can go to the other agenda item, because I think the map is in that agenda item. I mean, if.
Omen Road North is not EEOD, which is very, to Cape Shores or, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, if the council's inclined to do a maximum of 45 feet in the RPUD, I certainly could take a stab at doing a, some language that notwithstanding the EEOD, the 45-foot maximum height would prevail in RPUD.
If, if it fell in the EEOD, this would prevail?
I could, I could draft some language.
Unless it was in R2, that even exists.
This would be, RPUD would be.
RPUD would have its own.
Instead of R2, right?
Right.
Well, the Councilmember Willis pointed out that it's, you know, his buildings shall not exceed the maximum height allowed in the zoning district.
That needs to be corrected.
But this would be a new district.
Mayor, that needs to be corrected, because the height brought up that, Ms. Roberts brought up, looking at that one line that Councilman Willis referred to, that needs to be cleaned up.
Okay.
So we need to insert a maximum height. I'm suggesting, at least for now, put the 45 feet as a maximum height for an RPUD zoning district. And if the council's concerned about going higher than that for an RPUD, I can draft some language to make it. So 45 is the max in an RPUD.
Does it have to be 45? Can it be lower?
Yeah.
Right, if it's an R2 and a.
Well, I mean, no, it, RPUD, no matter where it is.
Is a zoning.
It's the zone.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. It's just a complete.
Yeah.
Brand new.
Doesn't even make sense the way it's written, so that.
Like, R2 maximum height is.
25.
25. R3, the maximum height's 45.
R1's 25.
And R1, yeah, it's probably 25, too.
I like the 25.
Two-story, single-family home.
E5's 35.
But, you know, if you, if, you know, multifamily is permitted, you know, I mean, I.
Well, if you're looking at 15 units per acre as a maximum.
Gotta go up.
It's, it's gonna have to be a certain height, because you would have maybe five units on each floor of an apartment, for example, or. So the height would need to accommodate those 15 units on an acre, right, per acre?
Right. But, you know, there's ways to deal with that. But height going up a little higher is, is one way to add density, right? There are also designs that we have seen just floating around where, you know, they're doing hurricane proofing of residential units, where your first floor is basically an open garage, and then your living units are on your second and, and third story of a single-family home.
Right.
What if we came back with, like you said, 45 feet, and then in the interim of everything else we're looking at, see if there, you know, what, the developable lots might tell us where something might happen or could happen, or. For the sake of the argument, make it 45 feet maximum, no matter where it's going to be.
My, if I, if I could, for, just to do like a quick recap of what we can put together for the next read, would be, you know, to come up with a, a height, a reasonable height allowance that allows for hurricane proofing and reasonable design without becoming a large commercial space. And then identifying the four-acre parcels that could be impacted with a future land use designation of residential, and then also within an EEOD overlay. And then also just determining what is cleanup and what is an actual change in our, in the ordinance as well. And then we can bring that to the table, so it's a bit clearer for the next, for the, for the next read.
Thank you.
My concern would be an RPUD in an R1 area where you're not going to have.
Correct.
These higher buildings. And you're suddenly putting 45-foot building right next to a ranch-style, single-family home.
Or some type of, you know, should be, what's the language that we use, that there's in accordance or character.
Commensurate with.
Yeah.
Commensurate with the.
With, with the neighboring area.
Well, and if you think of it, I'm gonna give an example in regards to what Councilmember Willis said. We just talked about the Hyatt tonight, and it was 2. some-odd acres, whatever that was. They have 150 units on that, and 80% lot coverage. And if you look at residential, and we're trying to get 15 units on an acre, cut that in your mind, cut that Hyatt lot in half. And then how tall would you have to go to allow that type of density on that lot, you know? And I'm, I agree with Councilmember Willis that we have areas in the city where development has been allowed, that you have a low-slung building, and then you've got one that's four stories or three stories or whatever, right next to it, almost zero lot line. So I agree that we need to be careful with how we allow that. So how, how would we, Tamsin, find out what would be reasonable expectations for code on an acre lot with 15 units, height-wise, and size of the lot coverage-wise?
So I think the example you just gave was the hotels, though, and wouldn't that be not a residential designation?
Yeah, I'm just giving that as a figurative thing, so that you can think of the size of the building, right?
Absolutely, yes.
And the fact that's two acres, a little over two acres. So if you cut that lot in half, think about how would you fit 15 units on that? How tall would you have to go to do that and not cover the entire lot in concrete, right? And so there's gotta be some kind of example somewhere in, you know, building code. And maybe the city manager can tell us how we can find that out for, or Tamsin, or one of you. Okay, that's, I agree with Councilmember Willis on that.
Let me, let me also add, in the, in the House policy, Legislative Policy Committee Housing Code, there is a bill going to be introduced in the Senate or the House this session restricting the ability to regulate consistency of designs in an area where it's complementary to other. And we need to, we need to have that buttoned up so that we don't get preempted on it. Because if that passes, you know, somebody can build anything, anywhere, any design.
Yeah, I mean, that's the big point of zoning, and if they do that.
They're, you know, as well as I do, sitting on policy committees, they're, they're going after everything they can to preempt municipalities from doing what they need to do. If there's some way we can strengthen that aspect of it as well.
So what I'm hearing is the architecture, design of the units being consistent with one another and, and not so diverse from one another.
Well, not so diverse from the other areas around them.
Okay.
For instance, if, where I live, if somebody was to come in and build on one of the lots next to us in between our condominium complex and Bayside, Bayport and all that, it all looks very Mediterranean. Somebody could come in there, and our code says it has to be consistent and complementary to the, to the surrounding area. They could, they could come in and, and just put clavish siding up and whatever. It could, it could look like a farm, it, you know, it wouldn't be consistent.
They're stopping a city's ability to prevent that.
Yes, yeah.
And I think, Tamsin, your summary was excellent. I think you captured everything we had asked. Thank you, plus, I guess, that coming down the pipeline that the state is.
So do we need a motion to approve it, or because there's other things that have to happen?
I think if we were gonna make any, it would be difficult to make amendments tonight if there was a desire. I mean, the one, the height, it sounds like even that one give you a chance to make them in between now and the next meeting. But for us to vote for those amendments, I think we could, we've done this before. We approve it as written, but obviously the discussion reflects some tweaks and changes.
I think there's consensus on that, that I can make those changes.
On the height?
Yeah, on the height before second reading, and then, you know, we'll highlight those, those changes for you before you consider second reading.
And the second reading will be November 18th.
So we don't need a motion because we have.
Yes, you do, for first reading, approval on first reading.
Yes, if we wanna.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve.
Ordinance 07.
I forgot where we are.
It's a long one.
The RPUD ordinance, I don't think there's a number yet.
Okay.
I think, wait a minute, 07, yeah, 07, 2025.
07 dash 2025 on the first reading.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Protem Kellum and a second by Councilmember Willis to approve ordinance 07, 2025 on first reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Protem Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 07, 2025 passes 5-0 in first reading. Thank you again.
Thank you, council. We appreciate it.
Okay, which, that right there ends our public hearing items. And now we had, obviously, early in this meeting today, we amended the agenda to add on a discussion item regarding Cape View Elementary. Councilmember Jackson, I think at that time, it's the same as the item discussion that was on, 10.1. My thought was, let's see where we are at that point, and obviously, if you wanna.
Yeah, we won't. I prob, oh, go ahead.
You're, to.
Let's get there.
Postpone it, and we, I mean, if we don't take any action, I think it'd go on his old business on the next meeting or however best suited. So if you're good with that, I think we can roll in, roll into the item for Cape View, which is really just a discussion item, and it's an important one. Councilmember Willis, I know you made the motion.
Yeah. I would like to discuss what we could possibly do as a city council. If, and I know Anthony can reiterate the, the position we're in as a city council with Brevard Public Schools and what we, what we really can and can't do, what we can and can't say. But I know that when we were talking about the roundabout and we basically created a resolution to submit to FDOT, that this was not what we wanted, not what our residents wanted. And if it's possible that we could do something like that, you know, Brevard Public Schools is Brevard Public Schools, same thing as FDOT. But they, they have their jurisdictions and their criteria. But I think we should at least make known how we feel about it as a body. And if it's something this council wishes to do, to weigh in as a body, I would welcome that.
Thank you. My comments, we heard some excellent public comments today, and I agree, Councilmember Willis. I think, you know, it's a, if the work product that comes out of his resolution, I think that's a good idea. But as Ms. Bass said, you know, speaking their language and understanding them, and as as we, and then the opportunity to meet. with, and I think the date was predetermined, but Rajesh, if I understand, we could work on a date. What you were talking about was what I thought, and it's just an idea, was sort of two meetings. I didn't know what it looked like, because I didn't know you were gonna be here and speaking on it, but it would, in my head, it looked exactly like that, is Cape Canaveral stakeholders, obviously council members, members of the public, P T O principals, anyone. Let's have a meeting, Cape Canaveral together. And then that meeting coming up on, I think, the twenty eighth, yep, October twenty eighth is what you said. I didn't, I was thinking more January, but hey, what we don't wanna do is, and, and, well, first, I don't wanna jump ahead, is I would like to have that opportunity to, we know that we, like the city, we can do resolutions, that's something we can offer. You know, what does the resolution say? And the board members, a majority of them have the power to make a decision. I assume it would be three members could essentially merge and dissolve, so who, what are the positions of those five board members? And so we're not going into a, a meeting in January, October, emotional, you know, talk. Cape Canaveral, the city is not on the same page. And I think I would, and I'll wrap up my comments here, is to say, to have a meeting with internal Cape Canaveral, and when I say internal, I mean, not the school board. The second thing was, if a town hall can happen and would happen, I did meet with Chairman Trent briefly, and he is in the discovery, the fact finding stage, and is looking, acquiring, and I, I, the one thing that I wanna share is it's according, and I cannot speak for, for board member, or Chairman Trent, but he said it was about enrollment, is if there's a way to improve enrollment, increase enrollment. And that was the big takeaway. So when we say speak their language, well, for that one board member, that was really important at that time to him. So if we go, just as an example, we're gonna talk about, you know, what the city can do with enrollment potentially, just brainstorming. And I'd share the same questions on if Capeview, if that happens, what is that economic impact? I think that's an excellent, because that's what our jurisdiction is, is what's in the best interest for the city of Cape Canaveral. That's what we were elected to do. And so if this school leaves, I think internally, when we meet with, with our, the stakeholders, if we can all come together and meet down and in with the city, that would be very good. And if it comes out with a resolution that we can bring to the board meeting to form, we don't wanna go into that meeting not on the same page as much as possible. A resolution, no pun intended, is a page of being on the same page. So I love that, that's it for me. Love to hear the. Councilmember Willis, I think if you, I think we all definitely wanted to add this on and discuss it, but to summarize, resolution would be good. Obviously, we need to meet to do that, but if Capeview and the P T O teams and all the stakeholders there send us some dates.
Yeah.
We would need to publicly notice it, and I think that would be great if all the council could be there, and our city clerk's office would obviously have to be involved if we all meet. Could the city host? Or maybe it's better to meet at Capeview, no matter where we meet, needs to be public, accessible, needs to be noticed, and minutes need to be taken to meet sunshine law. And so if we do it at Capeview, we would just need to have enough lead, lead time to meet those public notice laws. And my answer is absolutely, if I could make it, I will, I will be there. And I think if we can coordinate some dates, hopefully, the rest of the council feels the same way, we can meet all together. And in that meeting, we could.
We, we are running up against a clock.
Yes.
I think we would have to do this before the next council meeting.
Yep.
Otherwise, we'll be down one council member.
Yes, I, I think that would be excellent. If we could meet in the next, well, gosh, today's the twenty first. We're talking about a week out from that meeting. If you would do, we just ask that you come forward, council, do we have a problem with?
No, 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 no.
Please, yes. I think it's a discussion, this is what we're trying to do, is figure out what we can do, what's our role, how we can help.
Okay, just, just to clarify, this meeting that's coming up on the twenty eighth, we are not on the agenda. We're going for the public comment section.
Okay.
That's still very important, and we need to get there. The, a meeting where we are on the agenda is November eighteenth. That's when we have to go in there with everything we have and plead our case. And then they vote in January. So we wanna do as much as we can as soon as we can.
It's council meeting.
Excellent. You said October twenty eighth is the next one, we're not on the agenda, but we'll have public participation potentially.
Prefer to have council representation there with us on the twenty eighth, whatever that can look like. But the November eighteenth is when we really need our arguments in hand and need as much firepower as we can have.
When you say we are not, there, the Capeview is on that agenda.
Capeview is on the agenda for November eighteenth to be discussed.
That's our council meeting.
Councilmember Willis just putting it out, we have a council meeting on that date, so thank you for, no, this is good, though. It, it's good that you, I think we'll have to. What was the reserve council date for that one? I don't have it in front of me.
Well, we, we also have election.
Ending and terms beginning and.
Yeah, I think that's a big meeting for us, right? That, and to, that's the point, is that's our sign out with, and, and in, it's swearing in. That one's difficult to, to move, however. I'm confident that one, if not all of us, somebody can, that October twenty eighth meeting. My hope is that we can win this, or get the communication, the message that we want prior to that meeting. And if, if a resolution, I mean, that, those are the words of the majority of the council, right? Is maybe not as effective, but having that for anyone to walk in. We could certainly deliver something if this council chooses to them prior to the meeting. And if somebody there at a minimum can emphasize that this resolution is here and, and try to support with the key points, but I think they, if we do, we are up against the clock, and if we do a good job, that they're not going into that meeting not knowing where we stand, and that would be, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the whole closing of the school, to me, is a self fulfilling prophecy. I mean, we, if they close the school, move the students, young families aren't necessarily gonna want to come to Cape Canaveral. They're gonna want to have, be residing near their elementary school that their children are gonna go to. And if we don't have one, what, what are we going to become?
Especially that, I mean, that stat, ninety percent, it's.
Well, but, I mean, and even, even more interesting stat was the number of, the percentage that were having lunch and breakfast at school. I mean, that, that tells you somewhat about the demographic. And to, to a point made earlier in public comment about busing kids to Roosevelt if the family doesn't have a car. I mean, that's, that's putting a burden on that family. What are they gonna do? Well, they're gonna probably have to move. Unless they work within walking distance, but more than likely, that's probably not the case. So then what happens? So, you know, it, there's, there's a whole lot to this onion.
And I think that, thankful we had the discussion, but that's why if we can meet before the November eighteenth meeting internally, call it a workshop, where this whole council potentially has the option to be there, this city council, before the November eighteenth, and sort of like a joint meeting to where if we can have all the stakeholders and potentially even open up to any, anyone in the city, parents beyond, maybe it's kind of a two part, to where we can meet and, and sort out anything. And ultimately, it's to put a, that this city council has a position that we can submit to the school board on what we believe is in the best interest of our city. I think that that's the goal.
Yeah.
And I've heard a lot of good points, I've shared some of those concerns. And I've heard some really good ideas, you know, that some of the ideas that we heard, like, tonight. You know, this statement's been made that the city has got disposable income and money, well, and the property next door was used as an example. I mean, that property was not just cash, that was a strategic purchase, that was on debt, and it was a controversial split vote. But nevertheless, that was a decision that was made by the majority of the council, but it, it was a debt. You know, we didn't have money laying around to do that. And, but most importantly, it's not, it doesn't seem to me that it's a money decision of the, the school board. I mean, everything's related to money, but it's this two fifty percent enrollment. Do you move Roosevelt to Capeview or Capeview to Roosevelt? They seem that, it seems Capeview to Roosevelt due to the middle school, campus proximity. And I'm ready to step in and, and play the role that I can in any, any capacity. And I think that if they do not make a decision in January, is that, then, they will not, if it is not made by then, that's kind of the end, right? What, they could not come in much later than that, school's about to, that was. Starting. To Board Member Trent was, if they don't do it by January, then it's gonna go another year. So that's important distinction.
Well, I mean, is there, is there a date where we could meet, have a town hall at the library? We're all there? I can, I mean, before November eighteen?
Is, is that a large enough venue?
I'd like to do it on a city, if not the library. Is there, I mean, C five here? This would not be large enough, I don't think.
Or Capeview.
Or Capeview.
But I mean, is there a?
Yeah, the gym at C five.
What is the occupancy roughly of the gym? I mean, we do our employee lunch in there.
I don't know the occupancy of that, but that's doable.
Okay. As an option, and I think that, okay.
I'll commit to be at, at the twenty, October twenty eighth meeting. But, I mean, the only date I'm concerned about is November one. So, so we're doing a charity golf tournament for the Capeview, so. But yeah, I'll, you know, whoever, I mean, obviously, as a council, we, we can't discuss it. But, you know, just to be there, to let them know we are concerned, and listen to what they have to say, I'm, I'm happy to be there.
And I think that, you know, we're all get, you know, members of the community reach out to all of us, right? And then, you know, if Councilmember Jackson meets one on one, I may not know about it, and then I meet one on one. That can be really, there's pros and cons to that, but just for our schedules and the efficiencies, we can all, anyone, we can have one meeting.
Would that be chaotic?
It could be.
Like, what's the purpose of a huge meeting? Because if, if we're all this, all our emotions, is it just gonna be two hours of panic?
Melissa, I'm so sorry, I, anytime we speak, we do need to go into the mic, that's my responsibility. Well, I think that that was the two part meeting, was to know that would be, I think that having an internal meeting with key stakeholders, obviously, and then perhaps maybe a recess, and then open it up for an hour for public to come in and engage, similar to how we do ours. Or flip it, do that up front, and then we can have a meeting. City attorney, is there like executive meeting or any, what other options do we have for, if, if we wanted to meet with, if the whole council wanted to meet with?
Like, it could, could we do something, just that those of us that are taking action with the P T O, just could we meet, you know, ten of us, or five of us, whatever, you guys and the school guys, and just get a game plan? Because only a few of us are gonna be able to speak at the meeting, and, you know, there's just a few, a lot of support, but only a few of us doing the hardcore ground work. So I just wanna make it as efficient as I can for everybody's time.
I think individually, we could all say very quickly, yes, but if we were gonna have all of us there, I just wanted to see, I think.
Council's gonna, be more than one council member's gonna go and participate in discussion regarding Capeview, and it's some issue that the council is gonna consider in the future as a body, then you're gonna have to notice and, you know, notice that appearance and meeting.
Which, and we don't necessarily have to give a public participation in that meeting, right? If it's a special meeting to discuss and with an agenda and the business and.
If they were having a meeting?
Yeah, if they.
Like, if we have a meeting and invite you?
As long as we don't speak, right?
If the council members are just going there to listen, then, you know, it would not, and I don't think you need to put a notice out for that. If it's a community meeting.
Would the community understand that they can't engage the council at that point?
No.
They'll have their council members there, and they're probably gonna wanna hear him speak.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
And, I mean, really, is there any reason that all of us need to be there, where, you know, you can go represent or Don go represent, to where the sunshine laws, and then come back and report to us and?
I'm, yes, I'm, I just, I think that, you know, as we're all listening, if, if the opportunity that you wanted to be there, you could, and if that was the case, to me, it's better to just. Do follow the publicly notice, it takes a minute and do those things, and we still don't have to talk, but we're covered.
Yeah.
And it, it just allows us, I think, a little bit more latitude.
So if we wanna talk, like, if I wanna talk, plan with Mr. Willis for the, the meeting on the twenty eighth, then I just plan individually with him.
Yes.
And if I go individually to you guys, I can work with you, I just can't work with you as a group all at once and have you talk back at me.
It's really about, yeah, us communicating to each other through, or any third party, anything like that, yeah. I think due to time being short, I was trying to figure out the most efficient method.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna crush any ideas, I just, I'd like to get you guys involved in whatever way we can. If the only way is a big thing, then we'll take it.
If your goal is to, you know, you, that wanna share information with the council, all five of us may not be able to make it, but in the case that we got two, at least two, it's a meeting, we can listen, we don't still have to talk, we went out to take action or vote, but we're covered, and we could capture that. And we wanna be, I think, amenable to your schedule and, and flexible, and so. Not a big meeting, and I'm sorry to confuse, I think having a small meeting is still the, the goal.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Have to also be open to the public.
Yeah, I think.
If it was a notice council appearance, right? So.
Yep.
Not quite sure what kind of meeting she's talking about. If it's a private closed door meeting, I would highly recommend that no more than one council member goes to that type of meeting. For your own, for your own benefit.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, I don't wanna break any, just trying to understand. Yeah, I don't want to break any, just trying to understand what, what we're allowed to do, I don't want to do anything weird. Okay, so where do we need to go from here?
I think that if there, there was some desire, some ideas about, we want to meet, we want to hold a meeting, I think if those requests are made with some flexibility, and your time is short, and send some dates, if one or all of us, or if you can make it, I think that's the best path forward.
Well, we have a date, 11-4 is our alternate date, that we could schedule a meeting here for the council.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's on our calendar, 11-4, so.
Reserve date?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's an important one for, I think, November 4th, which is technically before the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Only if you're voting.
But we don't.
We're not having.
We don't have an election.
That's true.
You'll have to find time to vote outside of the meeting, if you're voting.
What is the ballot? I mean, we can't have it at C5, and if there's, is there anything being voted on in Cape Canaveral? Nothing.
No, no referendum.
No.
Nothing at a county level?
Any state.
Nope, nope.
State, county.
School board.
School board.
Yeah.
That's true, well.
Oh, no, not this November, that's next November.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm all figured, sorry.
Yeah.
Not in our district.
No, District 2 isn't, yeah.
Yeah, I had a, had a quick thought, like, will, will it be possible to have a resolution that we can take into the October 28th meeting? Like, if that's a possibility. I know we're like, we're real short on time, but just wanted to throw it out there.
We'd have to yield to our city attorney if that was possible. Without us meeting, I mean, that'd be, we'd have to vote October 28th, a week from today. After resolution, I think, but he.
What would it say?
Right.
Yeah.
We'd have to, we'd have to meet.
Okay.
And I think, yeah.
I thought if we, if we had the resolution by the 18th.
Yeah.
Cape View is on the agenda for the 18th.
Yeah, so that'd be the November 4th, we meet, adopt a resolution, we could have it for the 18th. But I think that if we meet, or however it turned out, whether it's one-on-ones, a combination of what we said, if we can find that, that, that will shape our resolution. And, and so, I think that that's important, that we can meet first, so that we come into the fourth meeting, and if it's at that meeting, and get an idea of, of what's important to include in it.
So could one of us go to meet with them, to brainstorm with them, and us on the fourth, the information?
Yes, I think individually, or one, I think, Melissa, I think you, I requested maybe to, that we can meet, and Regesh, I saw you out at the, you didn't sign the petition, I'm happy to meet, I think individually, any of us can meet.
Okay, like, give.
And I'm willing.
Well, then, you're in charge.
Should we? Don't break my phone.
Should we plan to meet before the 28th, or is that like, or should we?
I'm happy to meet.
Okay.
And I think each council member's availability, if they can.
And if I understand it right, it's like with the PTO principal and, and the council members, right? Is that, is that the meeting that we're talking about, or like, are we, this is like, bringing everyone, everyone in?
I thought we couldn't all go together.
I think if those members, if we are all going to be together, to Mayor Per Tams, the fourth would be the nearest reasonable date.
Okay.
And if it's your desire to have those people there, well, we can take action in that meeting, we, assuming a majority of quorum show up and we're able to meet, and, but prior to that, it's probably better to do, you know, maybe one-on-ones.
Okay.
Due to the short time, and if, and so, yeah, I think that's the best path forward.
Okay.
And then we'll go into that fourth, knowing, and I'm happy to relay, but I think, you know, we all have different ideas and thoughts and.
I, I would defer to you, if you want to be there on the 28th or whatever, but I think if, on our meeting on the 4th, if we could have it earlier in the day, for staff's sake.
Yeah, I never, I, day meetings weren't great for me, most days.
For the council meeting on the 4th? I'm just trying to be mindful of pulling a, pulling a medium, a meeting on the staff this time, huh?
Who would, what part of staff would need to be here? Just as.
Well, we're going to have to have the city attorney, we're going to have to have Esther and her group, we're going to probably have to have Mike and him, so everybody that puts on a meeting. Sounds like I got it fast.
Yeah, I mean, if we're asking the questions around economic impact, you know, Tamsin, then you keep going. Yeah, on the 4th, kind of, anything before 11 is going to be tough.
Well, I was thinking in the afternoon, in, in the afternoon.
Absolutely.
You know, just, just so that we're not keeping people till 10 o'clock.
Yep. Agreed, and my mind works better that time than now, and we're three minutes from, I think, our 10:00 PM. I feel that we're going to, from the public comments about the desire to meet, desire to have a resolution, sounds like we could feel good about having it on the 4th, if we could meet prior with whomever, as long as it's one-on-ones, I'm happy to make myself available. The 28th, I will need to confirm if I can make that one, and I'll go, it's school board website, I assume, the time, or do you know the time?
Uh, is it?
It's the evening?
Is it six or seven?
It's by the.
It's in the evening, okay. Then Councilmember Willis, you can make it, and really, any council member.
Well, October 28th.
That, that school board meeting?
Yeah.
In the era.
October 28th.
Yeah.
Okay. And just to clarify, so I don't do anything I'm not supposed to do, I've started conversations with most of you over email. Am I allowed to continue those conversations individually, or do I have to stick to one person?
No, I think you absolutely can reach out individually, city attorney can correct me or cut me off. I think where it gets a slippery slope is if you start relaying messages from Councilmember Willis said this, Councilmember Jackson's, you don't want to be right, that conduit, third party of the middle.
She can communicate in, with you individually. I would recommend that she not communicate with council as a group.
No, okay, as long as it's, okay, I just, great, trying to stay in my lane.
No, thank you.
Okay.
We're going to figure this out.
Thank you all for staying late to talk to us.
Yes, and just for the record, I did receive a letter from Pam Lancaster as well, and I'd like to make sure that we get a copy of this to the council, so you can read it. It was.
Is this the one about purchasing the property?
No, Pam is a sixth grade E.L.A. and social studies teacher, a beautiful family, she used to live actually two doors down from me, and really involved in the process, and she wrote a heartfelt letter here, and I think it's got some good points, so. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Good to go?
Are we going to get a copy?
We didn't see this coming when you, when we brought you on, it had no indication that Cape View, I mean, it's been discussed in the past, but we wish, none of us want to be here, this is not, we love our school, that's for sure.
It's, this is the job.
Yes. Well, agreed, it's, we'll play our part, and our, do what we can, thank you again. I think that's it, Councilmember, well, we're at 10 o'clock, unless we're going to extend for reports. Council, what do we want to do? Do we want to adjourn or extend for reports?
Postpone reports till November 4th.
Old business?
Yeah.
Okay, we, did you have anything?
I did not, mayor.
I don't need a motion, city attorney, to confirm, I know I've asked that, to adjourn?
No, we need one, technically.
Let's do one, looking for a mo, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And then I can go down, right, no roll call. Meeting adjourned, thank you. I know I get that mixed up.